All right, everyone. Well, seeing that everyone's here and at six o'clock, I'll go ahead and call our work session to order. A quick review of tonight's city council meeting agenda. We'll have public comment towards the very beginning. We'll go to our consent agenda, which is pretty light with just our city council meetings from our previous meeting. Under new business, we have a discussion on awarding contract for the engineering services for existing wastewater treatment. And then we'll have a conversation about the recent statewide freeze that will be implemented on Wednesday from Governor. I'm hearing feedback from Jeff, if maybe you can mute Angie. Thank you. Perfect. Then we'll go to our report from our city manager, followed by our city counselor and committee reports. Tonight at our city council work session, we're discussing our wastewater rate model funding plan as well as our master fee schedule. Any questions on any items on the agenda before we jump into our work session tonight? All right, great. Well, why don't we go ahead and jump into this wastewater rate model and funding plan update? Jordan, why don't you kick us off?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and introduce Doug Gabbard and Zach Hazel is also here tonight to present our updated rate model. This is part of our waste really came about is, you know, updating our wastewater utility or system improvements project and looking at our funding plan and what would be needed in this year, this upcoming year, in the future years for our wastewater rates. It's also it was timely because we needed to update our funding plan and financing plan for our WIFIA letter of interest that we submitted last month. We should hear back on that program, I think in January or February. But Doug and Zach have been helping us on this project. I think you remember them from last last year when they presented the the rate model for our first rate increase for the system improvements project. And then tonight, the purpose is to go over the update, kind of talk about the funding plan, what's upcoming in terms of in terms of revenue bonds, and look at some scenarios of what happens if we are successful with the WIFIA loan versus going with revenue bonds alone. Just as a, you know, a reminder of where we're at here is a $65 million project that the city is embarking on. It's the largest project in the city's history, and it has four very large components to it that because of our issues with having compliance with our permit for discharging it to Tickle Creek, our need to protect the water quality in Tickle Creek and in our community, and the fact that we've been growing and continue to grow. It's compounded by the fact that our system is also aging. Our treatment plant, our collection system have aged. It's time for reinvestment in the system, and we're under mutual agreement and order from BEQ to implement our wastewater system facilities plan. So those four components is a collection system improvement, which the council, just this last meeting authorized the approval of the first contract for doing the phase one work, and then we'll have a guaranteed maximum price approval later next year. We are, tonight you'll be considering approving the engineering consultant work for the existing treatment plan improvement. So we need to improve our treatment plan and make repairs there to make sure that that plant can achieve compliance with our discharge permit. And then we also have two other major components that will come in in the future years, which are very expensive, but again, necessary for our system and for our growing community. And that includes the membrane bioreactor treatment plant, so our new wastewater treatment plant and a diversion pump station. And then, of course, the the outfall to the Sandy River and the possibility that we're exploring right now for the Roseland Lake wetland idea. So again, major project, the city is in the initial phases of that project with some of the expensive work coming up this year with the collection system and the treatment plan upgrades. But this work involves getting, you know, revenue bonds, favorable loans like the WIFIA program. We have an outstanding clean water act loan that provided $6 million this year for the city to start these first phases of the project. And that that debt is paid by majority paid by utility rates from our repairs, the folks that receive the service of our collection system and in treatment of the wastewater. And so as part of the exercise in coming up with funding plan, we hire smart people like Doug and Zach to look into our financing, look into our utility in terms of operations and our capital spending plan. We refine that information as we get better information about project cost estimates, as plans kind of get developed, project schedules get developed, and then we update the rate model as we go. So this is the updated rate model that again provides an update with better information about what we know about the project today. And then the scenarios that we're able to look at now with whether we get WIFIA or whether we need to look at a a funding plan that would entail all revenue bonds. So I will turn it over to Doug to walk us through the PowerPoint. Yeah.
Quick question. The only I was wondering why we didn't have USDA, any USDA loans worked into that equation. Obviously, we're we have high hopes for WIFIA, but instead of going all the way into revenue bonds, or maybe that is a method of doing that. Are we looking at other favorable loan situations we can find ourselves in?
We are. We've had those conversations with our financial advisor. I think for the, you know, simplicity sake, honestly, to running the scenario with and without, you know, the the revenue bonds, especially with where the interest rates and terms are. You know, it's still, sorry, it's still a, you know, seems like a favorable, you know, sort of approach. But we have, that's still an option is to jump in and look at the USDA, especially for the first, you know, financing, but we are sort of running out of time on that. And regardless, we would need the interim financing for this first phase coming up this year. Doug or Mike, you can correct me if I'm wrong on any of that, but it's still worth, I think, exploring more on the USDA. But I think for the exercise itself, it was easiest just to plug in the revenue bonds.
Got you. Thank you.
All right, Doug, we did have a copy of the PowerPoint presentation in the council packet, so you can follow along as the slideshow goes.
Wonderful. Well, thank you, Jordan. I am Doug Gabbard with FCS Group. I am joined by my colleague Zach Hazel. It is wonderful to be talking with you once again. I have very fond memories of the last time we got together. I told you that you needed a 98% rate increase for wastewater and did not expect to get out alive and then found out that staff had done such a good job of informing you in advance that you knew that was coming. And so it was actually a very good conversation. So no 98% increases being talked about here because you're past that hump, but we do want to talk about what what is to come for Sandy and for the utilities. So my agenda here is to begin with a little appetizer and talk about water and talk about the last the last version of the water rate model that we that we thought about a few months ago. It's a little stale at this point, but we do want to be comprehensive in reminding you of where we stand on all the work that we've done. We'll spend the most of our time together talking about the sewer utility. And within that, spend most of our time talking about what rates will look like under the assumption that you will be receiving WIFIA financing. But we'll also talk about what it could look like if you do not get that financing. In addition, we ran some scenarios related to other external funding. This could be, you know, money appropriated by the legislature. It could be money you just happen to be able to save on project costs. Whatever the source is not really the issue, but the issue is if you do run into a nice happy accident with some additional money, how might that affect rates? And then we'll we'll close with some with some comparisons.
Can I ask a question pertaining to the discussion? I try to keep it to this discussion. Is this assuming that this WIFIA request is the one that we will or would not be accepted for or in the with we would just continue to ask for RIFIA until we got one? Or what's the scenario in that?
So what we're going to be presenting, the baseline wastewater scenario is getting the WIFIA loan that we have modeled. Then the alternative scenario is no WIFIA.
So we're not planning on trying again in '21, trying again in '22 and '23, whatever it takes to get the WIFIA. We're kind of, in this particular example, it's just.
Yeah, I can answer that. I think it sort of depends on what the feedback that we would get from this round. Last year, when we, you know, applied for the first time, we weren't successful. So we did get feedback about maybe a route that we can go to have a better chance. That was helpful. I think we had a much better application this year, had people with experience working on it. I foresee kind of the same process, kind of get that feedback from the federal government on, you know, what was in our loan application and then look at our, see where it might be able to plug that in in our our funding scenarios going forward, because you'll see, but we're looking at a revenue bond coming up this next year, followed by another revenue bond in a few years, even with the WIFIA. So you would still, it would still be advantageous to, I think, explore those favorable terms somewhere in the middle of all that.
It is certainly our intent in in offering the alternate alternate scenario without any WIFIA financing is to sort of bracket kind of the best and worst case scenarios. And for from a financing perspective, revenue bonds, which have to be, you know, repaid right away, and they come with coverage requirements. And that is kind of the worst case financing scenario.
Thanks.
You bet. So so let's start with with water. Again, this this analysis is a little stale, but this is accurate as of the last we looked at this. We we currently need in the current fiscal year, as of January 1st, which you'll see in a moment, an increase of 13%, followed by smaller rate increases needed. Just to give you a reminder of how to interpret these little charts, and you'll see a similar one for wastewater. The vertical columns represent different layers of costs. And so the bottom kind of grayish layer, of course, the colors may not be showing up the same way on your screen as they do on mine. But the bottom layer is all about cash operating expenses. The second layer up here is all about existing debt service. When you get the purple added, starting in 2024, that's new debt service. And then the final portion above that is is money that is available for capital expenditures. So as you can see, the first rate increase here kind of gets you out of an additional, an initial cash flow deficit. And then, once you're past that, you are able then to start getting ready for the debt that you're about to take on. And that's what subsequent rate increases are all about. And by the way, these lines, this this dotted line that I am referring to, this is the revenue earned under recommended rate increases. The solid line here is revenue earned under existing rates. So that's the water, the water picture. And to see the actual rate increases, we have a couple of a couple of slides that shows your rate structure and what the different percentage increases in mid fiscal year. So January 1st increases, how they would relate to different customer classes, different meter sizes, and also different volumetric rates. And that's really all we wanted to say about water. We wanted to focus mostly on wastewater. So let's begin the wastewater discussion with the, under the assumption that we're going to receive the WIFIA financing that that we're looking for. And so let's just go over some of the basic assumptions that go into a rate model and helps us generate the the recommended rate increases. We start with your current budget and your CIP. But looking in the upper left hand quadrant here, this is all about your budget. And we take certain categories of expenses and we escalate them by different rates according to market conditions. So for personnel, we escalate them a little over 2% per year. For materials and equipment, a little over one and a half percent per year. Same with transfers and services, these, this is a general inflation factor. And then interest earnings, about two and three quarters percent per year on cash balances that are unspent. We are assuming down to the lower left, an annual growth rate of about 2.8% per year. Now, as far as all of Oregon is concerned, that's a pretty aggressive growth rate, which means we have, we have vetted this with staff quite carefully. And so we think that is an accurate understanding of what your growth rate is going to be, at least for the near future. It's definitely something that you will want to monitor as as time goes on, because 2.8 will will not be sustainable forever, but it does seem to be accurate currently. We begin our, as I said earlier, our modeling efforts with the current bienniums forecast, and our rate revenue is based upon that that budget. Operating costs are also based on that budget. The revenue side is escalated according to customer growth, the expenditure side according to these inflation factors. There are some financial policies. Forty five days of of operations and maintenance have to has to remain in fund balance at all times. It's only 45 days with water. It tends to be 90 days, but with water, you have more seasonality than you do with wastewater. So we're safe at 45 days. And there's a small amount of annual system reinvestment funding to the tune of about $100,000 a year. That's not, that's not necessarily discreet projects. What that really means is we make sure that there's at least that much rate money available for capital each year to to handle reinvestment needs. But the but the actual projects on which that spent still come from the CIP as all the other projects do. So capital is a huge part of your your wastewater rate picture. As as Jordan already said, you've got $65 million in in just the WIFIA related projects alone. And so that is where the center of this graph is. You do have a few things going on in here, a few capital needs here and some in the out years. But but this is the big one. This is what we have to get ready for. This is what we have to get you financially prepared for. Over a 20 year period, you're looking at over over $100 million in total capital projects. Sticking with the assumption that we are going to get the WIFIA loan, we present the plan for financing all that capital. And this portion of the of the graph here shows up as gold on my screen, but this is the WIFIA loan. And then, as Jordan was was mentioning earlier, there are, there are revenue bonds at various points in the capital plan, and so we don't completely escape revenue bonds. So just as a reminder, I'm sure you've talked about this ad nauseam, but there's a couple of reasons why WIFIA is so good, at least from from my perspective as a rate consultant, the things I care about. So the WIFIA loan is is favorable terms. But but perhaps even more important than that, and by terms, I mean interest rate and all that good stuff. But perhaps even more important than that is you don't have to start repaying your WIFIA loan until five years after you use it. And so that creates an opportunity to gently ramp up your rate revenue so that you're able to to pay it back. So here's what our, here's what the the revenue requirement graph looks like for wastewater. Notice how the big purple for new debt service, it really spikes up in 2030. That's the WIFIA loan. And notice how it's five years after you actually get and use the money, which is way back in 2025. So in the short term, we're looking at a 13% increase in the in the current fiscal year on January 1st, followed by a few years of 8% and then really tapering off to to kind of inflationary levels. This will allow you to keep up with the debt service. And when we're talking about revenue bonds and revenue bonds are part of your financing portfolio, revenue bonds come with coverage requirements. So you may be, you may be wondering, why are we creating room for rate funded capital in here? Why don't we just debt finance all of it? Well, the reason is when you debt finance things with revenue bonds, you have to earn rate revenue in excess of what you have to spend on operations and debt service. You're allowed to spend that money on capital, but you you have to collect. Pardon me, you do have to collect it. I'm going to enjoy my complimentary beverage. So when you have when you have coverage requirements, you create the opportunity to have.
I apologize, Doug. Would someone please mute Preston's account? Thank you. Go ahead.
All right. So anyway, so that's the explanation for why there appears to be rate funded capital. That's all about making room, the room created by having coverage requirements from your revenue bonds. But that is the picture for the rates under the WIFIA scenario. Here's what your fund balances look like. It's going to appear in in 2025, when you, when you get that hit of WIFIA financing, that you're you're gonna, you're gonna look pretty flush, but you're going to spend that money. And so that money is spent down over the years, and you get a pretty gentle landing to your to your low point for fund balances all the way out in in 2036. And so we think we've we've managed the cash flow pretty well. This this shows that we we got the the borrowings right. So here's what the rates look like. Again, this is the baseline scenario, assuming that we get the WIFIA financing that that we're expecting. The midyear increase of 13% will will create your base rate to bring your base rate to $23.29, the volume rate to 598, and the outside city flat rate to $84. And then you see other rate classes below that. So let's talk about what happens if you don't get the WIFIA financing. If you don't get the WIFIA financing, your portfolio of funding sources goes to all revenue bonds. So that means that the terms are a little less favorable. It also means that you have to start repaying things right away. So now this is, there's no more little gold at the top of this. This is all purple revenue bonds. So at the very beginning, the rate increases look the same, but they but they persist. They are higher, they last longer, and and so you ultimately pay more under the revenue bonds. This should not surprise anybody. And in fact, it was part of the WIFIA loan application process to show that the financing that WIFIA provides is is advantageous and will save the rate payers money. And it certainly will, because this is what the rate payers are looking at if the WIFIA financing does not come through. We also wanted to take a look at what if there was some additional outside funding, and we don't know what that looks like. As I mentioned earlier, it could be something like an appropriation from the legislature. But but money is money, and so it could be something as simple as some of your projects cost a lot less than you thought they did, or or something, or you get a few major new customers and you have an influx of revenue. Who knows? But we wanted to, we wanted to do a little, a little what what if? So let's assume for a minute that we're, we're starting with the baseline scenario of getting the WIFIA financing. So we're going back to the to the initial assumption that we're going to get the WIFIA financing. These are the rate increases that we initially talked about under the WIFIA financing. And we're gonna, we're gonna start adding additional cash infusion in fiscal year 22. So we are currently in fiscal year 21, so that's essentially two years from now. So $1 million, $5 million, and $10 million of of windfall, for lack of a better term. What you'll notice is these windfalls don't have an immediate effect. But what they do is they do allow you, in in most cases, to start tapering off earlier. So $1 million looks just the same as the baseline until you get out to 2029. With $5 million, it tapers off earlier. With $10 million, it tapers off much earlier. So the the windfall, one one takeaway from this is is a windfall may not have an immediate effect like one would hope, like, like we get $5 million, we don't have to do rate increases this year. I would not want to give you that expectation. These, these things will have an effect over time. So we wanted to close our our presentation by showing you how things compare between the rates that we're proposing and what what other jurisdictions are charging. This is water. Even with a 13% increase, you're you're low now and you will be low after your increase. So this is, this is a single family residence with six CCF of consumption. On the wastewater side, you're kind of middle in the pack and you'll you'll go a little bit higher. I don't think this this surprises anybody. It's it's important to remember that it is, we we know what's going on in Sandy, and we know why the rates are going to have to go up. We don't know what's going on in these other jurisdictions, and a lot of these other jurisdictions could very well be on the verge of of large rate increases. And so it's, it's very difficult to know exactly what's going on there. And that's why we tend to offer comparisons with some caveats. But this is what it currently looks like for the first year 13% rate increase that we're facing in wastewater. And that's what we've got. We're happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Doug. If we could maybe take that down so we can see everybody. Perfect. I can now see everyone. So is there any questions from council to get us going? No, no questions. I mean, we're, we're a pretty educated group at this point. You know, it's a, it's a big reason why I want this council that's, you know, looking at these issues. We've, since the very beginning, this has been a process that's been a main focus of ours. So we were kind of expecting this presentation. Counselor Exner, I see a hand up with a question.
Yeah, and I I get this from the previous questions and answers we had with our projections about what our increases are going to be. Maybe this is more of a question to Tyler or Jordan. I gotta tell you that this has not been a very pleasant year. People have been fighting with unemployment. People have been watching the expensive increases that we've had to do with our sewer water rates. And it's been a tough time, and we got people that are on unemployment or not even getting employment with the way Oregon State seems to be not paying their unemployment costs for folks who have been applying like over and over again. If we decide, well, what happens if we were to decide instead of a 13% increase at this time, just bite the bullet and say, let's pass it and say six. And I realize that at one sometime down the road, we'll end up being in the hole for it. But I'm, I'm really trying to be conscious of the tough times that we have gone through in this past nine months with the COVID and all the rest of the things. Everybody knows what they are. What would our consequences be? What would be, how much in the hole would we be if we decided that maybe half our increase? Just to recognize that there has been a lot of impact on our citizens' incomes and limitations, especially if we're talking about businesses who are, may very well be going out of bankruptcy, going into bankruptcy.
Well, Doug, I I think the answer probably is, the issue is, we need to be able to show our debt coverage and fund balance, meet the requirements in order to get a good bond rating and sell bonds this next year. So that's the main, I would say, the main driver in order to go out and get the cash that we need to fund the next phases of these projects. Is that correct? You know, the other thing is. I, I, you know, the other thing is. This year, you know, in in the immediate, you know, term and what we're looking at and having to, you know, achieve this. These, these project components with the wastewater treatment plan, the collection system and the next round of collection system improvements. You know, the, the more information we get about this project, the more, you know, we, we can be find those numbers and the project costs and when we're going to have to expend those funds. We're going to start going through all this permitting process with DEQ. And so we'll start getting a better, more clear picture on, you know, when we'll be doing this capital. And you saw the numbers actually changed with this rate model versus the prior rate model we showed last year. I think we were projecting a 16% increase. When we were showing this year in the previous rate model and then 10% increases on the out years. So just going through this exercise every year as we, you know, start more engineering work and get better cost estimates can bring those rate increases down. But I think for the 13%, we're in this position of needing that interim financing to bridge us to get to the WIFIA loan in order to carry out the project. And and that's, that is basically has been driven by that debt coverage ratio that we're going to need to show that we're credit worthy to go get that financing.
There's no other way to get a source to make up the difference. What, let's call it. I don't know how much money the difference would be. And I'm assuming it's going to be a large number. There's no way to go in and and find a way to cover that debt in from some other source alone. Not sure what else we could work our way towards, but there's no other source of making up the difference. I I get the part about making, looking as strong as possible for the WIFIA loan. That's probably critical.
I mean. There's always the options of buying down how much we need through like general fund contributions and things like that. But, you know, that comes at a consequence of, you know, general funds, fund balance and possibly other, you know, generally funded services. You know, loans, we're going to be in the same kind of situation. Be able to show that we're credit worthy to pay back those loans and having the coverage necessary. You know, if the council wants to look at the utility as a whole, you know, we had the presentation on the water rates. That's largely been being driven by outstanding debt that we have currently plus anticipation of the completion of the water master plan. And what we're going to need to do with our filtration plant or piping to achieve, you know. You know, that that compliance of what the order that Portland's under. So, you know, we have, we have those kind of looming issues, but I think there's probably more flexibility there. If there's any, we can kind of, like Doug said, this was sort of, he called, I think he called it stale, but it was sort of, conditions hadn't changed enough that, you know, warranted a lot of time spent on the water fund. Just because that we don't have the water master plan completed yet. But that might be an opportunity to maybe hedge a little bit more. I know we are about, oh, we just did the water meter project. So there is financing that we need to pay off for for that project, even though that's going to pay for itself over time. There's the upfront costs and the need for for the capital there. So. I'm, I'm not in a comfortable position to say, hey, we can knock a bunch of, you know, 10% off of that rate increase. But, you know, we may be able to sharpen our pencils there. And then there's other utilities too.
But to your point, what worries me about that, and I, Counselor Exner, I hear everything you're saying. I I share the same worries that you do. But I I'd hate to leave future councils and future neighbors of ours in the same predicament with our water that we have found ourselves in with our wastewater. Especially knowing a lot of the the upgrades and the things that we're going to have to make on our water treatment. You might remember during that same presentation of, that we received from our new vendor on the wastewater. They they did detail some, you know, some of things that we're going to have to do with our water as well here in the next couple of years. So I'd hate to not, you know, start accumulating funds for that, just to kick the can down the road. Like, I feel like we've kind of had to experience ramifications of ourselves.
Sure. And if you, if this had been a great year for economy, if this had been a regular year even, you know, I, I could, I could assume some of this stuff. But it has not been a regular year. And I will at least go on record to recognize that I I feel the hurt. I get phone calls fairly regularly about how much this stuff is affecting him, us already. You know, basically 100% increase in our rates. And I get that part. I know we got to pay for it. I understand how that all works. I've been through this one way too many times. But I just wanted to make sure, I just wanted to punch that button just one more time and say, you know, is there any way we can look at shaving off, you know, another fairly significant increase? You know, we're talking 13%. That's, that's not going to be huge, but it certainly adds to all the other things that we've experienced. So I just want to make sure that that's brought up any way we can.
Counselor Pete's.
Yeah, I, all I could use, Stan, what you said there to Carl. I mean, I agree, it's tough times, but you know, we have asked the count, the staff years ago, you specifically, Carl, myself and others that were on at the time. About the next topic, the master fee schedule, you know, like, we can't do these big increases all at once. That is shame on us years ago for not charging a little bit more. We thought we were doing something nice and good by keeping the the rates as low as possible that, but now 20 years later, it come back and bit us and bit us hard. You know, none of us were on the council back then. I mean, I've been on, here you go, Lori, a long time. But the, the, you know, and so could I go back in time and say, let's raise those a little bit each time back then? And and our position would be a little bit different. But, you know, we, we saw those rate increases on other things drastically several years ago. And we said, whoa, hang on, you know? But those were things with inside the building department. And but when we come down to this, I'd be afraid that we are going to lose out on the WIFIA loan by coming already back on the plan that we agreed to a year ago. And I see Doug shaking his head, and that makes me even more nervous that we'd be talking about that. Because, you know, we really need, I mean, it really benefits our community, the entire city if we are able to get that WIFIA loan. And I have high hopes for that. But then also, I think of the DEQ and what's going on down there as we show our goodwill in doing hard things, even in hard times. Because, you know, of their, their statements to us and not being happy with not being able to do this all quicker and faster. And so then we'd be going just backwards on, on what we've said there. I get it, I really do. And 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 don't take my comments of being insensitive at all. I really do feel the pain as well. On that same note, though, at least it's not another 90 some percent increase. And and we, I guess that's all I have to say. But just remember what we, we talked about Carl years ago on that whole master fee schedule. And the farther we kick it down, it's not going to do us any, any better. In fact, in fact, it may do us worse off, so.
I just, I just want to make sure that, you know, I I understand, we got to pay for this. And we got to look as strong as possible for our WIFIA application. I think that WIFIA is a necessity. I, if we don't get it this year, we need to work on it for 22. But 22 doesn't happen when we come to 23, until it becomes obvious that it's not going to help. But, you know, I, I still think we all feel the pain of what we've gone through the last year as well as knowing what our commitment is. It's a big pain. It's a big price, I mean.
Thank you, sir. I saw Counselor Lee with her hand up.
Yes, I agree with Jeremy that there aren't other choices right now. But I was wanting to remember, I think you mentioned it before, Jordan, what the timeline was on knowing about WIFIA.
We expect January, February. It could, you know, it, the application letter of interest process was delayed by about a month this year because of, I think, probably coronavirus, you know, difficulties and stuff. But we were, we were told January, February.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. I'm not seeing any other questions. Thank you, very much appreciated, Doug. And then our next item is our master fee schedule. You want to start us, Jordan?
Yeah, I'll introduce Tyler Dean, Finance Director, who's going to, this is a study session on the upcoming proposed fee changes for entire master fees and in charges. Schedule. And this is really, you know, something that the city kind of changed the last couple of years is to do these more on an annual basis as opposed to an ad hoc or as needed basis. Again, for some of the things that Council President Pete sold addressed is keeping up with inflation, keeping up with construction costs and making sure that we're accurately, you know. Charging the the amount that we need to cover operations and capital. And also just the 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 rest of our fee schedule. That includes things like planning and building and public works charges and, you know, miscellaneous fees across the board. So Tyler's going to review what those proposed changes are. A lot of them are, you know, the, you know, your, your regular updates per CPI or per, you know, the engineering news record indexes and indices. And so I think he's going to run through those. I think you've heard the two big ones already with the utility rates. Like I said, the rest are sort of the miscellaneous fees for different departments.
All right. Good evening, council. First, I'll say thank you to Doug and Zek for doing half of my work on the water and sewer rates. And Council President Pete sold for mentioning some of the other items that we're going to talk about. So thank you in advance. Let me share my screen here so you can see these fees. And so I'll just give a brief recap. It was a couple of years back when council opted to start seeing more regularly. Processed fee increases, so we didn't have these large increases all at once. The first couple of items here on miscellaneous charges are relatively uneventful or unexciting. Proposing to increase the business license, late fee renewal up to $39 to one, you know, promote more prompt payment from some of those businesses that aren't paying on time currently. As well as just to keep up with, you know, the cost of staff time every time there is a late. Letter that goes out, that's, you know, staff that's, you know, compiling the list of late applications, getting those mailed out, postage, et cetera. So just bumping that up just a little bit to help offset the cost of that. Some other minor increases on our comprehensive plan maps and the development code, just to keep up with the cost of printing those documents. The next category, oh, excuse me, and records requests. So typically, we look at the average hourly rate for the staff that would typically be completing the record request. So the administrative fee is just your general admin slash clerical staff. And then executive fee, if it rose to the level of needing a department head to complete that records request. I would also like to note that we typically don't charge if it's 15 or 30 minutes a time. If it's a quick report we can get out, we're not charging our billing for those types of services. These are much, you know, more detailed records requests that take hours of time, you know, pulling staff away from their normally scheduled work. The next group of categories that we're proposing an increase on are the planning charges. This is really where things sort of started a couple of years back when we wanted to look at CPI and regular increases. We're proposing a 2% increase across the board to all of the planning fees. You can see that that's a relatively nominal increase, you know, $221 for accessory dwelling units up to 225. So not a huge dollar amount associated with most of these fees. It's a relatively minor. And then jumping down to building charges, it's been a number of years since we've increased our charges and fees for building services. Director Kelly O'Neill of the Development Services Department looked at what other entities or other agencies, rather, in our general area, were charging for some of these services as well as just the actual cost to provide them. For example, you know, a reinspection should probably cover the cost of the building inspector's time to go out there and do that reinspection. So just getting all of these costs more in line with what it really costs us to do service. The building department does not receive a general fund contribution. It is completely self sustaining. So this is one area where it's pretty important that we are recouping the cost of doing service so that we can make sure we, you know, have a nice contingency there in the event that there is another downturn in the economy at some point. We want to make sure we have healthy reserves and can continue to provide these services at the same level we're providing them now. And there are not across the board fees in the building department. It's really the select areas where we, you know, see the most traffic. So inspection fees, the general mechanical, you know, building permit fees, that type of thing. And then there are just a couple of new fees that were added or proposed, proposing to be added reinstatement fee for permits. So if you applied for a permit and then it's, you know, been stagnant for a number of months and now you want to continue on with that project. After the original plan had expired, there would be a fee associated with that. Temporary certificate of occupancy permit fee and then, you know, penalty for work commencing before permit is issued. Moving into the next category, we have a couple of sign charges. So these are, again, nominal increase in the permit fee itself. Just a small change in the, you know, the, the permit for changing the existing sign. We've been charging $10 for these A-frame signs for a number of years. So this is really just aligning the master fee schedule to match what we're doing in practice. We currently sell the garage sale signs for $3 per sign. We don't have like a pack of them, this three signs in a pack for $20 or some old signs that are no longer something we carry. So that's just cleaning up the, the fee schedule there. The next category would be public works charges. We're actually promoting, proposing to remove fees in this category. Currently, customers get one free meter read per year and then it's $10 per read after that. We have the new software now with our AMR meters. And so we can look at water consumption and get a read pretty much any time of day right from the front desk at City Hall. So we don't need to send out utility workers to actually physically get a read any longer. So there's really not a need to charge for that service. And it's the same more, similar thought process here for the initial meter read fee. So currently, every time a new account is set up, we charge $10 for the physical need of a public works utility worker to go and read the meter and get that account set up. We don't need to do that any longer with our new software, generally speaking. So we're proposing to just remove that fee entirely. And then we'll get into the system development charges. So Jordan already mentioned. The engineering news record, construction cost index. That is the same scale we've been using for a number of years as well. The last time we updated these SDCs for water and transportation was in May of 2019. Since then, the ENR CCI has increased by 6.1%. So we're proposing just a flat 6.1% increase on the water and. Water and transportation SDCs. We did, as you recall, increase sewer SDCs more recently than that. And so since October 2019, when we did the last increase, that same index has gone up by 5.5%, which is reflected here in these new proposed increases for the sewer SDCs.
Tyler, what is a south and southeast? Or is that supposed to be southeast? Sewer basin on the sewer.
That should read southeast. Thank you, Counselor Pete sold. I will. Do that live for you right there. Appreciate it.
And can you define that area?
I do not have the area handy. I believe I saw Mike Walker on the call. He might have a, a quick response for that. But if not, we'll bring a detailed. Location description back at the December 7th meeting.
Yeah, those are just basically sub basins that have like a pump station or larger trunk line that we need to recoup the cost on. And so there's a, it's a surcharge, it's a cost on top of the citywide STC.
So is that like, Snowberry is one of those south or southeast?
Snowberry would be the south UGB sewer basin. Southeast would be everything served by the Jacobi Street Pump Station. And north would be everything served by the North Side Pump Station.
Okay.
Thank you, Mike. Next are water and sewer rates, which Doug and Zach have already outlined, but these just reflect the 13% increase that was already discussed this evening. As you can see, that's across the board for meter size, volume charges and base fees. Same thing for the sewer rates by base fees and by volume charges. And then lastly. Weeks to library.
Tyler froze, he moved out of the city. He doesn't have Sandy net.
Yeah, still see a string.
I was waiting till later in the meeting to tease you about that. But, you know, Sandy net's been struggling the last couple of weeks, buddy.
Oh, not here.
I'll use this as an opportunity to to cut in and mention, oh, there's Tyler. Maybe I, well, I'll just continue. Sorry, Tyler.
My internet connection, dang it.
One thing that's not reflected in here that we still have plans to bring back to the council is. So we did the SDC indexing for the increase there. But we also had that work session with the council about increasing SDCs for. council about increasing SDCs for adding Gunderson Road and Olson Road. So that is still in the, in the plan, in the works to bring something back to council. And Counselor Peetzel brought up those basins and that would, we also had that conversation, a work session about a similar basin on the transportation side, similar kind of mechanic of an area that would be drawn and then recovering costs for the improvements in that area as an advanced financing district or something to that effect. So that is still under the development. We, you know, we didn't put it into the master fees and charges schedule yet. There's a little more rules around those, those fees and costs and noticing and study on that, but did want to mention that. Sorry, Tyler, you're back.
Oh, thank you. Sorry. So just a couple of other items I want to note before we open it up for questions. There are some varying effective dates for these fee increases. A handful of them would be effective January 1. Administratively, that's just easy and makes sense. That would go for the miscellaneous charges and the library. And then talked about with the January billing for water and sewer rates. The building charges, we would not propose to change those until closer to March. The reason for that is that we are required to provide 45 days notice to the state of Oregon before we make those changes, before those changes are adopted. So depending on how these are received by council this evening, you know, we could propose or provide those changes to the state and then look at adopting those, you know, after the 45 day time period is completed. And then also proposing that the system development charges don't change until the building changes take effect, simply because we need to go through, again, the state of Oregon who manages our development services software to have them update those fees. So more, more or less from a practical standpoint of sending all of our changes in at one time to get our software updated at one time, just administratively makes a little more sense. Any questions or concerns that we'd like to discuss?
I'm good. Any counselors with any questions?
Just a comment. I just appreciate the, the small amounts that has changed, as I mentioned earlier in the other topic, though, several years ago, 10 years ago, you know, it kind of shocked us, you know, some of these rates that were just kind of doubling during the last time we first started going through this. And so over time, it's been the smaller incremental amounts, which I think are much more palatable for everyone. I look at those and the majority of them are like $2 or $5 or $10, you know, not $2,000 for this one increase or $500 for that one increase. So which was what we saw many years ago. So I appreciate getting up to this point in time for that. And I think it'll be much more palatable going forward as well with those smaller increments.
Totally agree. All right. Well, thank you, everybody. With that, why don't we take about a seven minute recess here until seven o'clock when we'll start our regular council meeting. Thank you. All right, everyone. Well, seeing that it's now seven o'clock, I'll go ahead and officially call the city council meeting to order. Jeff, if you could display the flag and then people can join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. All right. Well, welcome, everyone. Per usual, I'll start off with a quick review of tonight's agenda. We'll start right off. I'll ask for changes to the agenda, but then we'll go into public comment. That will be the portion for members of our community that would like to provide public comment to our city council. At that time, I will read instructions on how to participate. You'll be provided three minutes and please don't forget to state your name and address for the record. We'll then move on to our consent agenda, which is small tonight with just our city council meeting minutes from our last meeting. Under new business, we'll discuss awarding the contract for engineering services for existing wastewater treatment plant condition assessment improvements. And then we'll have a discussion on Governor Brown's COVID-19 statewide freeze that's expected to go into effect on Wednesday. From there, we'll get a report from our city manager, Jordan Wheeler, and then we will have committee and council reports and then we'll adjourn for the evening. With that, Jeff, would you mind calling the role for tonight, please?
Yes, Mayor, Councilor Peetzel.
Here.
Councilor Smallwood.
Here.
Councilor Hamblin.
Present.
Councilor Lee.
Here.
Councilor Exner.
Who?
Councilor Schultz.
Yeah.
And Mayor Polian.
Here. So with that, is there any changes to tonight's agenda? All right. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move forward into public comment. So this is the time where council welcomes any comments from the public. There is instructions on our agenda, but if you are participating online, please click the raise hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, please dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. The way we usually do this is I'll turn to Jeff. Jeff will call on someone who will join us in our meeting. You'll be provided three minutes and please remember to state your name and address for the record. With that, Jeff, you want to go ahead and get us started?
Okay, Mayor.
Mayor, real quick, can we make sure folks know that just because we're having a discussion about the new executive orders coming out, that this would be the time that they would speak to their concerns with opening or non reopening because we won't have public comment during that conversation?
Yeah, that's a great clarification, counselor. Thank you. Yes, this would be the time to participate in that conversation. Thank you. Remember to please raise your hand if you would like to participate.
Okay, Mayor, I do see one hand. And I will click the button to allow this user to unmute themselves now. And please state your name and address for the record. You will have three minutes and I will jump in and let you know when there are about 15 or 20 seconds left.
Hello, welcome.
Hello.
Can you hear me? That's Lila. We can hear you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Lila Reed. I, my address is 19595 Southeast Martin Road in Sandy, Oregon. My husband and I are the owners of Mount Hood Athletic Club in Oregon. And I'm going to try to get a lot of stuff in three minutes. We are very against the order that came out shutting clubs down for multiple reasons. The first one is that the government's own Department of Health COVID-19 infection report, which gives a weekly COVID-19 cases that goes back to six of 2020, shows absolutely no cases linked to any health club at all. And Mount Hood Athletic Club has had 44, over 44,000 visits since we reopened in May of this year, and absolutely no cases have been linked or reported to our club. So we are beyond dismayed with why clubs are being singled out. Add to that, that we have always been, according to the OHA guidance, considered a personal service for all the guidance that's come out. And suddenly now we are no longer under personal services and there's no justification for this. And so the, the big problem is that although we may be able to weather a two week shutdown and an ongoing shutdown is not possible, and many of our colleagues already in the state are going to have to stay open or they will close permanently. And we are not far from that reality ourselves. We feel it's a basic human right to self determine how you care for your health. By shutting clubs, Brown is depriving those with mental health issues and comorbidity challenges, the ability to fight this virus. People can't go out and exercise, especially the frail. And, you know, the cold wet winter does not give them any options to take care of themselves. It's reckless endangerment of public health, we feel, at a time when having the right to try and stay healthy is paramount. COVID is a cardio respiratory disease and exercise is one of the best and safest ways to safeguard ourselves against this virus. What we need to know, inasmuch as this council and our local authorities can tell us, is how will you support us if we do choose at some point and need to not go along with a mandate that has come down with absolutely no proof that anything is coming from, from, no cases are coming from clubs. We need to know where you stand.
Thank you, Lila. Appreciate the public comment this evening. And most of our discussion and conversation will be taking place here in a few minutes at that portion of the agenda. Thank you for your time this evening. All right, we're looking for any additional public comment. Please remember to use the raised hand icon to raise your hand or dial star nine if you're participating over telephone.
Okay, Mayor, I'll go ahead and click on the next user to unmute themselves. And please state your name and address for the record and you'll have three minutes. Welcome.
Hi.
Yes, go ahead, please.
My name is Gabby Schuning. I live on Coachwell Road. That's not directly Sandy, but close enough that I do all my shopping in Sandy. I'm part of the athletic club. And I'm very, very frustrated to hear that the club may need to shut down because I do take care of my health needs there. I am not afraid of the virus. I believe like we can keep our immune system strong with exercise and healthy nutrition, and that should be encouraged. And I'm totally against this shutdown.
Thank you so much for your
Support the Sandy businesses and staying open for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabby. Appreciate your time this evening. Jeff?
Okay, Mayor, I will click on the next name now. You should be able to unmute yourself and please state your name and address for the record and you'll have three minutes. Welcome.
Hi there. Good evening, everyone. My name is Dana Hindman Allen and my address is 42290 Southeast Erickson Road in Sandy. And I, I actually was very concerned too when I heard the health club may close down. I guess I just want to bring to the surface. I know, you know, Mayor Stan, you've been mentioning that, you know, we are our own community and that we don't necessarily need to be bulked in with basically Kate Brown is Portland's mayor in some fashion, it seems like, or excuse me, Portland's governor. I just feel this impending feeling that we've sort of lost control of being able to self determine our own lives, our own risk tolerance. And I, first of all, I want to thank you for standing out and mentioning and standing up to what you believe, Stan. I just want to know at what point is this unconstitutional to be thwarting people's livelihoods and ability to take care of themselves? So I guess I just want to put that out there. And, you know, I'm longtime resident of Sandy and I know that, you know, we're pretty independent out here. And so anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time this evening. All right, we're still open for public comment. Remember, if you'd like to participate, use the raised hand icon or if you're participating via phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand.
Okay, Mayor, we do have another hand up. You should be able to unmute yourself now. Please state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes. I'll let you know when there are about 20 seconds left. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for that. My name is Jane Wolf and I own the CrossFit Gym PFB in Sandy. I live at 36455 Yocum Lutz Sandy 9055. I do want to thank the mayor for standing up today and for all of you listening to our concerns in Sandy for small businesses that are being threatened with the close again. You know, a lot has gone through my mind in these past three days. And I had talked to Paul, who owns the Mount Hood Athletic Club and hope that we could come together and unite as, as a fitness center, as a CrossFit gym. We've got Thrive in Sandy. We've got all of our bars and restaurants that are now being forced to enter this situation again. We had a long conversation. The fact is, is that there is no data to support that I had known of, which like Lila said, to say that the gyms have to be closed or any recreational facility has to be closed. My concern is, is that it seems that they are punishing people for the spread of COVID and they're like putting their hands in a hat. And it's just like, okay, we're just going to shut the gyms. I feel like, like Lila said, that the gyms are here for a reason. We have many people, our Sandy police, or we have our aggression police officers that come and use our facilities. They use that so that they can just, you know, work through their day. They, some other people have PSTD and, you know, there's so many things that the fitness centers are there for. So anyway, my concern is, is that we keep sitting back and taking it. It's kind of like, okay, when is there going to be a time when we say, no, this is not okay. We need to figure this out. As far as my gym, we are very small. We only have 10 people in our gym at any time. We sanitize as we come in, we sanitize as we go out. We have squares that we all stand in. It's a very, very isolated situation for people to workout in. We're very careful with what we do. I would like to invite Governor Brown to come into the gym and kind of figure out what we look like and what we're doing to keep people safe. Anyway, I hope I don't sound too nervous on here, but the thing is, is that Governor Brown is, I feel like is just choosing things to shut down and not even having any evidence. It just feels like it's a very wrong situation at this time. I do respect the fact that I think Sandy needs to unite and someone needs to stand up and say, this is not okay. We are not going to be ruled just by you telling us. Thank you very much. I do want to thank you for your time. It's the first time I've ever had to do this type of thing. So anyway, thank you very much. And whatever I can do for Sandy to help us make us better, I'm here to do it and do the right thing.
Thank you so much for your participation tonight. Again, please use the raised hand button or dial star nine if you're on telephone.
Okay, Mayor, we do have another hand up. This person should be able to unmute themselves now. And please state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Hong Xiao Bauer. I live on 36150 Southeast Down Road. I just wanted to say that I am the regular workout person going to the CrossFit, Janet, just the speaker just before me. So I wanted to say I so appreciate that we have a great facility to work out. And it was shut down for a few months. It was really hard time for people that if imagine you don't have a place to go on the, we go in that on the regular basis and all of a sudden now, you know, we don't have a place to workout. And it's not easy for people to actually work out at home. Not many people has the facility. So I would just wanted to say that her gym is definitely a small, really small gym. And then it's really, like she said, is centralized and everything. And we're all keeping the distance. So I really want to just kind of support the initiative. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Jeff?
Okay, Mayor, we have another hand. This person should be able to unmute themselves now and please state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Lyman Hyder. I actually live in Milwaukee, Oregon, 4693 Southeast Arden Street. I was, came in contact that this meeting was happening through the CrossFit Gym in Sandy. And so I was chiming in just to kind of hear what your guys' take would be and to see a direction of what your city is doing. It sounds like you guys are doing some good things. My question is really to the police chief. You have Governor Brown saying that she's going to work with law enforcement to enforce some of these rules that if people are going to be gathering and things of that nature, or has she reached out to you guys about what she's expecting of you to do if people, you know, congregated gyms and if people are at home with larger groups? I'm kind of interested to see if that's something that she's truly reached out to you guys to discuss, or is it something that she's just saying right now? Again, with everybody that is calling in for as well, just for gyms, it is very important that we don't get lumped in with, with everything else that's going on. As everybody continues to say, the data is showing that gyms are extremely safe right now. And for us to be held hostage and accountable for other actions is tough. So, you know, hopefully, you know, some things will change in the future again. I appreciate what you guys are doing. I know I'm on your city. I do have some of my members that do live in your city and speak highly of it. I've spent some time there as well, but I do have some of my members that do live in your city and speak highly of it. I've spent some time there as well, but I thank all of you for doing this. And taking the time to listen to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. And I'm sure Chief Roberts will be participating in the conversation here a little later in the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, we do have another hand. This person should be able to unmute themselves now. Please state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes. I'll let you know when there are about 20 seconds left.
Hi there, it's Tina Hovey with Mountain Mocha. I'm nervous. I don't know why. But I'm, I'm more or less just listening in. We. We serve probably 200 customers a day. We're mainly takeout. So this doesn't directly affect us. Although. If you heard how divided our community is, it's amazing. I guess that's what I'm trying to say. I'm stuck on a fence all day, every day because what's right, what's wrong? This customer wants, you know, so trying to make everybody happy. It's very divided. And I guess that's what I want you guys to hear. I'm all for trying to stay open, of course, but not everybody wants to hear that, unfortunately. The one positive for me on being able to close the dining room right now, and this is totally off subject. But the homeless population has gotten so bad that they are in our shop constantly. And so I'm kind of looking for a two week hiatus from it to hopefully have them move on. So that's, that has nothing to do with it, I realize, but in my sense. That's the only positive I can bring out of it. But anyway, I just want to let you guys know I'm here, I'm listening and. Yeah, it's a pretty divided community, to be honest. So.
Thank you so much for your. I just sat through and had several meetings at Mountain Mocha the other day and I can attest that, I mean, they do have a situation going on over there. That's a little more than usual. That, that's definitely for sure. Jeff.
Okay, Mayor, we do have another hand. This person should be able to unmute themselves now. Please state your name and address for the record and you'll have three minutes. Welcome.
BJ Grimmer, live at three six four five zero or circle. I'm glad you guys are at least bringing this up to the forefront. I don't know, I'm not a business owner. I just live in town and I'm kind of frustrated with. Being told what to do, but what are the consequences for a restaurant if they just say, we're going to open? I mean, do they have the authority to shut them down long term? I guess I don't know that. I mean, I would support any restaurant that's willing to stand up for their livelihood. Is that something you guys can answer? Are you going to address later? I don't know, but.
Yeah, that is what we'll be addressing later as we've asked staff and are going to do a little research on that, that they'll be reporting back and kind of leading to a discussion for us as counselors.
Okay, and I would like to see, I mean, I've tried talking with the school district superintendent, just something similar to this, like some involvement with the community. Like, I feel like the governor's made these decisions in a bubble, not involving any of the affected parties, whether it's these restaurant shutdowns. Whether it's school where my kids aren't learning anything. And she gives zero effort or thought into what that does to people. Whether they, I've had no family members that have quit jobs to stay home with their kids now, because they're not in school. I mean, there's people that are, they're living is these restaurant services or whatever, a gym. I've heard a couple of talks about gyms. I mean, this is people's livelihoods. I don't think she is taking any consideration in. And I mentioned it to the superintendent. And maybe we could do something as a city, maybe make a quick vote, whether it's an online vote, get a percentage of people, whatever. Seventy percent of our community, eighty percent of our populace wants these businesses to be open. They want our kids in school. And we can report back to her and say, I know you're trying to make, force this down our throat, but the majority of our people want things to open. So let's open them.
Great. Thank you, BJ. Really appreciate it tonight. All right, remember, if you'd like to participate in our public comment session, you can click the raised hand button. Or if you're participating via telephone, star nine to raise your hand.
Mayor, I'll just give it one more second, taking a look at the list. Oh, we do another, yep, we do have a couple more hands now. So I'll click on the first one. You should be able to unmute yourself now. Please state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes. Welcome.
My name's Brent Webster. I just heard these people ask questions and, and. We didn't get any answers. What are you going to do to the business owners that? And what if, what are the business owners supposed to do to keep their businesses open? We've already gone through a six months of mask wearing and it was going to be 10 days. And so what is the city council of Sandy? I've heard all the ways that we're going to raise the taxes. Thirteen percent and more over mandates. From the federal government on the water system and, and so now all the taxpayers, they don't have any jobs or any cash. Coming in, now they're going to have to pay extra and you're talking about building permits and all these things. And who's going to be able to build anything? You can't even, we can't even go get a cup of coffee. So what, what are people going to do about this? We know this is illegal. It's against the constitution. It's already been shown in several states and the governors and the mayors are just ignoring these orders in Washington and. Pennsylvania and, and Oregon and just violating people's rights worse than ever before. Over a, an imaginary cold that is proven to be a fraud. With the test, the PCR test and the amplification, everybody will test positive if it's given it the proper. Amplification of millions of times. And so what are we going to do about this? Are we going to say no? And is the little town of Sandy going to do something about this? Or are we just all going to ignore it and put our mask on?
Thank you very much for your comments and questions. We definitely will be addressing that. You'll be getting some answers. This just happens to be the public comment portion of our meeting. We will be discussing this here in a few moments.
Hey, Mayor, I do see another hand. This person should be able to unmute themselves now. Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes. I'll let you know when there are about 20 seconds left. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name is Nicole Lewis. I live at one thirty three thirty three Southeast Marsh Road in Sandy, Oregon. And just like so many people have mentioned, I feel ridiculously nervous for not being able to see like all the faces that are chiming in right now. I wanted to speak on behalf of my gym, my CrossFit Gym in Sandy, Oregon. Which has been so much more than just a workout place for me. It has been an environment that has helped me to remove myself off of antidepressants. Has helped me be a better mom and a better wife during all of this COVID related nightmare. While my children are being kept home and all of the struggles that we're related to financially and emotionally. It terrifies me to have to go through any more of a time period where that outlet and that. Environment that provides strength and mental health to be taken away from all of us, especially when. I feel like we wipe down and sanitize so much more than I've ever experienced in my entire life. It is the most healthiest environment I've ever experienced and it breaks my heart that people that have put their entire lives on the line to help us. Are facing financial stressors because of this. So I hope that that's taken into consideration, how much they're giving. And how much is at risk by taking this away from the community.
Thank you. Very much appreciate your public testimony tonight. All right, I don't see any hands up, but we'll wait a couple moments. Remember, you can use the raised hand button or dial star nine if you're participating via telephone.
And Mayor, I don't see any more raised hands either.
All right. Well, thank you to everyone who participated tonight. Your comments and participation in our council meeting is. We're very appreciated. This is really what service is all about, is representatives of our community to provide these opportunities. And I know that as council, we got some emails as well, correspondence from both sides of this issue. And no matter where you're at on this issue, we're here to listen and to represent. So thank you again for your time. With that, we'll move ahead with our council agenda.
There looks like we got one more hand. It was a late one, right when you started talking. Sorry.
No problem, no problem. Why don't we take one more public comment? Thank you.
Okay, great. That individual should be able to unmute themselves now and please state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name is Leah Pravel. I live at four zero one eight three Southeast Kitswell Road. I live in Eagle Creek, actually, but I do attend the CrossFit Gym in Sandy. And I'm nervous, but I just wanted you guys to know that. That gym provides so much for so many people. And the thought of it closing again and people not being able to go in there and just get that little bit of relief. It's, it's just a lot to take. Jane and the Wolf Pack, they're, you know, they do everything they can to stay open. And, you know, everything is clean. We, we sanitize so much and it's just. If, if you guys just knew how much they did to try to make the community better. I, I just can't express enough how much that I appreciate the gym and, and it's true. I, I don't, I don't live in Sandy, but just being able to go for one hour a day. And just have that, that time to forget about everything, that the whole mental aspect of it all, it's just. It, it's, it's true. It's really, truly true. So I hope that you guys can do whatever you can do for us. And, and thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, well, we will move ahead with our council agenda now at this time. Up is our consent agenda unless there's discussion. I'll be looking for a motion from council.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
And I'll second.
There's been a motion by Council President Jeremy Peachold and a second by Councilor Exner to adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye or provide me a thumbs up.
All right.
Those nay or a thumbs down. Motion carries. We'll move on to new business. Contract for engineering services for the existing wastewater treatment plant condition assessment improvements. Jordan, would you like to start us with this?
I'll start off. I'll just introduce Mike Walker, Public Works Director. He's going to introduce the, the contract and give the overview. We also have Rob Lee here, who's our owner's rep on this project and Brittany Park, who's also part of the owner's rep team. And then a couple of the team members from the selected consultants, I believe are here as well, Preston. Yes, there he is. And they're here to answer any detailed questions, I think, if, if any of those come up from council. But again, I think, like I said this last meeting about, you know, sort of we're getting into the real stuff now, which is exciting. You know, earlier tonight, we talked about rates, which is not so exciting. But the council and, and at this point in this project, we've reached the point of actually letting some of these bigger contracts now. To begin some of the, the advanced work of doing the wastewater treatment improvements and the collection system improvements. So this will be for the engineering services for the existing wastewater treatment plant improvements, much needed. And we're very excited about moving forward with those improvements. We've put a lot of work on sort of the maintenance and repair side over the last year. But this will be for those condition assessment improvements that were identified through the facilities plan and the work that we've done with Viola and our other engineering team. So like I said, we're excited about, you know, bringing this in front of the council for your approval. And I think Mike can add a little bit more. I think we had one change that we want to make sure we make tonight to. The council's motion, and this is based off these ongoing conversations that we're having, trying to move fast on this project. And negotiating with the consultant in light of the work that we're doing with DEQ right now. So we're doing a lot of work behind the scenes to see what, everything that we can do coming up in this project. To make our plant come into compliance as much as possible down there. And so that. We've been negotiating the scope up until kind of the eleventh hour here. So Mike, sorry for speaking so long on the introduction, but I'll hand it off to you for the rest.
Yeah, thanks, Jordan. You know, the first paragraph in the staff report just kind of goes over the chronology of, you know, the events that got us to this point. Seems like September was a long time ago, but you know, to get something like this advertised, solicit proposals. Receive proposals, rank the proposals and interview the proposers in 60 days. Is a pretty quick turnaround and, you know, I think that, you know, it's testament to the contract or the solicitation documents. That Leeway Engineering prepared for this and the assistance they provided, city staff and the review committee. In helping us ask the right questions and so that we could. Fairly and impartially rank the proposals. And that was very helpful. They participated in the interview panel as well. And then one twist on this is we also asked Viola staff to participate in the review of the proposals. The ranking of the proposals and the interviews. It's good to get their perspective since they're the ones who actually have to operate the system. Once the improvements have been made. So their input is very important as well. The, the price proposals were set up on a conventional design bid build contract or project delivery process. But during the, after we made the selection of West Yost. We asked them to prepare a scope of work based on a construction manager, general, construction manager, general contract. Project delivery method, which is what we're using for the collection system rehabilitation project. We believe that this will save us some time and allow us to complete some of these improvements. With, hopefully by the end of twenty twenty one. And so they've revised their proposal. We're still going back and forth. On a few items and as Jordan mentioned, the dollar amount that's in the motion and the staff report is probably going to be closer to $500,000. But staff would like to request is that we remove the not to exceed amount. And just authorize staff to negotiate a scope, scope of work for CMGC project delivery. Method and a fee for this as well, even though the, the cost may go up a little bit. We think we can save a lot of money. In the long run, add more improvements than we could for the, with the conventional design bid build and save a lot of time. So that's what the staff recommends. And you'll notice in the first paragraph, we mentioned that. Kind of some background on West Yost and we just referred to this mysterious project, proposed project manager. That worked under facilities plan in the past, but as Jordan pointed out, it's Preston Van Meter. He's with, he was, I'm sure most of the council will remember Preston. Of his presentations on the facilities plan. Preston is now with West Yost and he's on the line too. If you had any particular questions on what he believes we can do to save time and maybe add more improvements. To the project by using the CMGC project delivery method.
Hey, thank you. Is, is that the presentation from staff? Are you ready for questions now?
Yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you. And questions from council? Counselor Exner.
I hate to be the talker all the time, but trust of you have some laryngitis or something. I'll jump in here. This is probably for Preston or from Rob, either one. Been in conversation with some of the watershed council, especially the Clackamas side and watching some of the emails back and forth. And I know that DEQ would love to see us increase our ability to deal with too much. Water input into our system and been watching that thought process and being kind of disappointed in that there really isn't anything that. We can do beyond what we're doing. On one respect, I appreciate all the hard work that's been going into the current system. DEQ is kind of pushing us to do even more. Which is, I don't sure what that might be, but either Preston or Rob is, is there anything else that we can do beyond what's been recognized in the contract here? It, it is quite a bit anyway. I think we're talking quite a bit of money as it is. Improve the existing plant, but if there was anything else that made any kind of sense. That beyond what we've already talked about, I'd be greatly appreciative of hearing anything like that.
Rob, go ahead.
So that's a, that's a great question, Counselor Exner. I think there's a few suggestions that we actually ran through Jordan last week. And we formalized some of our recommendations. Brittany helped put together a quick memo on that. Mike was out on vacation, so we definitely want to go through Public Works Director.
Mike was out on vacation, so we definitely want to go through Public Works Director before making those recommendations to council. But there are a few small things that we think can actually be really low hanging fruit that might result in some some further flow decreases. And I did get confirmation that right now through the evaluation done by one of the city's other consultants. Another reuse facility, kind of like Isley Nursery, is not feasible at this time. If the council remembers that discussion, just without purchasing another specific plot of land and trying to farm on it. So yeah, but I think there are a few small things that we could try to do to help move the wastewater program forward, particularly on the collection system side. And that that could be incorporated into the CMGC collection system work. I don't know, Preston, if you had any other ideas, but I think one last thing, one as Mike alluded to. One of the reasons we're going CMGC, it does give us more flexibility during the design and even construction process to incorporate some things as they come up through the, through the course of the improvements. As opposed to the traditional design bid build, which means we just design it all and we lose that flexibility. So the the methodology that Wes Jost was proposing, I think is really going to help the city. Not just from the accelerated schedule, but also the flexibility. We don't know all those things yet, but that's part of the process and why we chose to move forward in this process.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, right, Preston. You're muted. From beautiful Hawaii. You're now unmuted, but I can't hear you. Go ahead. All right, we'll go ahead and skip that portion. All right, we're good to then. Okay. All right. Well, seeing no other questions, the one thing I I would just reiterate to is it's just as much as we can do with the current plant. While we are, I'm going down this process, I think it's of great value, especially right now with everything going on with some of our negotiations. With that, I will entertain any motions from council.
From Mike, was it that we were going to ignore the not to exceed price? We talked about 500 grand, but the 464 and some change was the number I saw. Yeah, we would recommend that you just authorize staff to negotiate a scope and fee for West Joe Services. And right now our estimate is it's in the neighborhood of $500,000, but we don't have a firm dollar amount yet. We can come back to the council with that at a later date. But in order to get the project moving, we'd like to go ahead and finalize the scope and fee and authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Wes Jost. And like I said, it's the ballpark for using here, 510 to 515 somewhere in there. But we hesitate to put a not to exceed figure on it until we have a clearer picture of what the scope is going to look like. Okay, well, I'll move that we do authorize the city manager to select the host and be able to come up with a CNBC process. I would like to hear what the number, the dollar figure number is when it comes known. But beyond that, I move that we agree to the host being the contractor.
A motion by Counselor Exner. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Counselor Smallwood. All those in favor signify by saying aye or provide me a thumbs up.
Aye.
Opposed, a nay or a thumbs down? Motion carries. All right. Well, thank you, Rob, Preston, Brittany. Appreciate your time this evening. All right, moving forward with our agenda. All right, we're to the COVID-19 statewide freeze. David, I know you and I have had some conversations and you were doing a little bit of research on what Governor Brown did. Perhaps you or of course, Jordan, you're always welcome to start us off as well. But I'd be curious, just to kind of to start us off, before public testimony, it'd be nice to provide, get a little bit of background of exactly what Governor Brown did and kind of how she did it.
Sure. I'm always happy to do introductions. They tend to be long winded, but I'll let our city attorney, David Doofman, do most of the talking on the specifics. But just to give the background, you know, the governor last week gave a directive that there's going to be a two week freeze coming up, starting on Wednesday and lasts for two weeks. Except for the exception of Multnomah County and possibly other counties that don't show improvement in slowing the spread of the coronavirus. And this freeze would limit restaurants to take out only, reduce capacities at retail and grocery stores and shops to, I think, 75% occupancy, excuse me. And then close gym and fitness facilities for those two weeks. There's other restrictions too. Which would be restricting, I think, social gatherings are calling it to just six people or no more than two families. For those indoor and outdoor social gatherings. And like I said, this is a two week freeze currently. But you know, Clackamas County has been linked in with Multnomah County and Washington County in terms of the rephasing of the, or the reopening plan by phasing. So we don't know at this point whether Clackamas County would be beyond the two weeks of the statewide freeze. So we have not seen an executive order as of last time I checked a few hours ago. So I've not seen an executive order on this directive. You know, we we saw the press conference, we got the notes and the press release. And I think everybody's seen the news coverage about this. We've heard a lot of great questions and comments tonight from the community, which is much appreciated. We heard those questions and I think David, you can help and and the chief can help answer those questions as we kind of talk about this issue, what the city's authority is, what it's not, what this sort of means for businesses and in compliance and enforcement. And then I think the chief has some comments too that he can add about, you know, throughout this, since the spring, what has been our approach in handling the closures and reopenings and, you know, enforcing things like mask wearing and stuff like that. And I, you know, just from, you know, where I said, our, our philosophy has been purely educational and soft touch first, right? Informational, educational complaint driven only. We don't proactively go out and look for violators and look for gatherings or anything like that. And we don't have any indication yet that we would need to change that approach. So I just wanted to state that. But David, I'll turn, go ahead and turn it over to you to share some of your research information that we've kind of looked into and then, you know, also the chief too, if you had any comments after that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jordan. So yeah, as Mayor Pauline said, I had a chance to talk with him a little bit. And a chance to talk with Jordan as well and the chief this afternoon. And I also just checked the governor's website to see if there's been any update. And I still don't see an executive order. And so talking with colleagues at the office, we really do feel that based on what she has described in the press conference and what we've read online, that that would, those restrictions would need to be in a new executive order. We don't see that the, there are a lot of existing ones. It can be overwhelming along with everything else with this experience. But going through the executive orders can be, those that exist already, its own challenge. But our, the office consensus is that there would need to be something new in order to enact this, as she's described it. So we don't have that yet. And so it's always, you know, it'd be really nice to have it. I think there'd be a little bit more, you know, specifics that at least I could certainly give and weigh in on some of those specifics better. But, you know, with that caveat, as as we understand it, as Jordan said, there's going to be additional restrictions on gatherings. And that certainly is something that would affect, let's say, the upcoming Thanksgiving holiday. It would cover that two week period. It's going to be to begin two weeks, as Jordan said, for some places, including Multnomah County. Right now, this wouldn't apply to Clackamas. It's going to be longer than that. Of course, the the gyms and recreation centers would be closed. And then the additional limitations, which are, I think, going to be a real challenge to enforce, to be candid, but additional limitations on certain retail establishments and bars and restaurants being limited to takeout. I guess it just, you know, sort of to start with in terms of, you know, we do have with both the executive, or one of them anyway, the executive order from the governor of last spring. And then some other challenges from other states that have made their way to the US Supreme Court. We do have some guidance from both the Oregon Supreme Court and then as well as the US Supreme Court. Basically about this issue about authority and the scope of the authority that a governor would have. That's always going to be dependent upon what state law says, because when it comes to emergencies like this, ultimately, each state is going to have its ability to declare its own emergency within its, within its borders. And the vast majority of them have. And as we can kind of tell from watching the news, there's different approaches to how each state is going about this. But in this, I guess it would have been in June, the Oregon Supreme Court issued a decision that resulted from a challenge to, at the time, the limitation on on gatherings that was, I think, 25 people. This is before the phased approach really kicked in. And that was brought by some churches as well as some business organizations. And ultimately, the Supreme Court looked at the the scope of Oregon's law and the restrictions that the governor had enacted and kind of went through a little bit of a history in detail, basically how broad that authority is. You know, whether we like that or not, basically the idea is that when it comes to emergency declarations, whether it's a natural disaster, whether it's something like a health emergency like this. Oregon law, and I think this is true in most, if not all states, grants an extreme amount of authority in the chief executive, the governor. And so that was, you know, sort of addressed in the context of that initial order. In the, excuse me, the Oregon Supreme Court looked at it and said, you know, with respect to the restrictions that that, that order had in place and some limitations on business activity, they ultimately found that that was lawful. So, you know, there's some guidance there as to how a court might look at this as well. And I will say that I think, you know, judging from that decision, you know, it would be, unless there's, there is with respect to any particular restriction. If it is, essentially if there's a rational basis for it, if there's evidence that it maybe goes either way. You might be able to look at it in a number of different ways, but as long as it's, it's, you know, not seen as, you know, without any basis, in fact, generally, I think these restrictions will be upheld. So I think they're pretty difficult to challenge. The US Supreme Court cases sort of second that, basically, and kind of support how difficult that is and just again, sort of illustrate how broad the authority is for, for governors when, when states impose these types of restrictions. The language that the, and I'm just not going to get into a big detailed discussion here of the case, but it was a, another case from the summer that made its way up to the US Supreme Court. It was a South Bay church. I think it was an Illinois case. South Bay Church was the, what we call the petitioner. And the opinion there, Justice Roberts, said that basically officials have especially broad latitude to impose restrictions when they're doing so to fight a communicable disease. And so especially when the science is sort of always moving around, there's a lot of uncertainty. They're granted a lot of that discretion. And so obviously that is something that leads to a lot of the bigger debates we've been having. And, you know, I think it's one of the folks that had commented that there's a significant amount of disagreement amongst the public. And that's, that's absolutely true. But the end of the day, I think that to the extent that people had a basis legally to challenge this order, and again, we don't have it, so we don't know exactly what it says. You know, they would have to show that that it was basically arbitrary on behalf of the governor. Candidly, I don't know enough about the background and especially with gyms. You know, I just don't know, you know, what she's looking at, what others have looked at to make that conclusion. Obviously, the rise in case numbers are having, you know, a significant impact and effect on, on, on these types of decisions. So I guess to sum it up, without trying to really make it too academic here. I think, you know, unless there's really just absolutely no basis for an order like this. I think very likely the governor of Oregon, other states would have the authority to do that. And so the question then becomes, well, what authority does the local government have to say we won't follow that? And generally, not much. This is a situation where when it comes to these things and when it comes to, you know, emergency preparedness generally, depending on, you know, whatever the emergency might be, whether it's, again, a natural disaster or, you know, pandemic. The, the, the policy is basically, it would be making it even worse, potentially, if everybody was kind of doing their own thing. And so again, we are most likely looking at, you know, whenever that determination is through these orders is what applies statewide, if that's what the order applies to. And in this case, it will. So, you know, I, I wouldn't say that, I guess from my point of view, that's likely to be something that the city, other cities. I know other jurisdictions and communities are talking about this in the same way, would have a, a difficult time in a justifiably saying, we're not going to enforce it, we're going to ignore it. How would that work out? Like, what does that mean practically? Well, there are penalties that are associated with violating the order. The one that would deal, there's a criminal penalty, a misdemeanor, a class C misdemeanor for each violation. That's a fine of $1,250, could up to 30 days in jail. I don't know candidly, I said this to the mayor today, whether that would apply to each individual day that would go by if a city were to say we're not going to follow it. Would it be, you know, one instance of it? I, I simply don't know. This is sort of uncharted territory. And, and in that regard, there's not really any case law on it. But I think another important point to make is that even if a jurisdiction were to say, well, you know, we don't want to follow the order, we don't want to enforce it. I think a thing that, you know, business owners, others that, you know, could be affected and will be affected by the order have to realize is that they, they would still be subject to, to penalties regardless. The state could take its own action. And this gets to one of the questions as to, you know, what would that look like? So in addition to the, the potential for, you know, misdemeanors, there could be civil penalties that are imposed and certainly, depending on the business and depending on how they're licensed, if they are licensed at all with the state. You know, I know for, for instance, restaurants with a liquor license that happened down in Southern Oregon, you know, a few months ago. That were staying open in violation of the order, O LCC was able to, to pull their license. So there's, there's those ramifications as well, those consequences, which even if a city were to say, well, we're locally not going to enforce this. Those would still exist. And that's, that would be true regardless. So I, I'm talking a lot here. I, I certainly want to hear from, you know, counselors as well. And, and there's probably more I can say, but maybe some questions at this point would be appropriate.
A quick question, and then I'll go over to Counselor Hamlin. And my question just is, is obviously there's a lot of laws on the books that don't necessarily get actively enforced every day as a result of triage in local police departments. With resources being thin, you know, we in fact, we had institute a public safety fee over the last biennium to help support our police department. This is a case for departments throughout Oregon. So I mean, I mean, sure, there's the being upset about the mandate and the order from the governor, which, I mean, I think I've been quite vocal that I'm upset by it. But then there's also just a practicality of enforcement with the, with the resources and everything that we have. So could someone maybe walk us through kind of that part of it a little bit? And then we'll go over to Counselor Hamlin with this question.
Yeah. I mean, I, I can speak to what I believe, and it's pretty well-tested law in terms of the requirement or the duty of law enforcement when it comes to enforcement. And that is, it's not incumbent upon them, they are not required, they have, they have latitude and discretion in terms of what they enforce for the, you know, really the very same reasons Mayor Polian that, that you mentioned. You know, they, they are not expected certainly to, I guess there's sort of two, two pieces to this. One, there's no expectation that they'd be necessarily proactive, going out and looking for violations, whatever that law might be. And I think in practice, that's whether we like that or not, that's often the case. I mean, law enforcement can be a reactive discipline, and I think a lot of that gets to some of the resource questions, right? There's, there's plenty of things to do, but there's limited time and there's limited money to do them. And so law enforcement historically, and this has, you know, been, plenty of courts have, have made the same conclusion, that, that there is discretion as to what they enforce and what they don't, based on all those considerations. And it's kind of like if you think about, you know, there's also beyond the, the resources and the money, there's also the issue of enforcement may not be necessarily the, the best way to go about remedying a problem, right? And I think the chief can probably speak to this pretty, pretty well, just having talked with him over the years. And again, today, I know that, you know, he's been a proponent, and I think wisely so, of, of trying to, you know, when there is a problem and he knows there's a problem or his officers who get, see compliance through, you know, less punitive ways and, and more through education or, you know, warnings, et cetera. And so that, that's, that's certainly an element as well. But I, I, I don't know, again, with the order, if there's anything different about how it would be written, not having seen it, but generally speaking, even if it kind of has everything that we expect it would, I believe still going forward on Wednesday, let's say, that the Sandy Police Department, other local police departments would have the same discretion in terms of how they enforce it, if they do it all as they do with every other law.
Thank you. Chief?
Yeah, just I'll, I'll add a little bit. Thank you, David, for explaining that. That was a very good point. We've, let me, let me just backtrack a little bit on how we handled our, earlier in the year when we had the other orders, just as an example, we didn't issue one, not a single citation for any kind of mask mandate or anything like that. So there are, you know, there are ways to, to gain compliance, which is our mission, and that isn't always like David was referring to issuing a citation or arresting somebody. Those are, are not the only ways to gain compliance. And, and we've always approached this throughout this, this pandemic from an educational standpoint, and that's worked so far. During that time, we had a relatively low call volume. We did have calls and we are obligated to respond to those calls and we will respond to those calls going forward. Now, without the executive order, I'm assuming that we're going to keep that discretion that, that we have now, and we will be able to deal with those issues as they come in. Now, those calls that come in, we'll, we'll certainly be, those folks will be contacted by an officer or myself or one of my administration folks. And then the goal is, of course, always education first. I would, and as I had mentioned before, I think any kind of issuance of a citation would be an absolute last resort in this. I don't think that's needed, although I'm, I'm hoping that's correct, but generally in the past, and that's how we've treated these issues. And not only with this, this is how we go about our business in many different ways. Another example would be sometimes the best way to gain compliance is, is through a warning for whatever that may be. It could be a violation of other laws that you're able to give a warning for, and that's what gains you that compliance. My point is, is we use that as a tool to complete our mission, which is compliance. So hopefully those, that doesn't change. I do not see that happening. I think there was a question earlier from a gentleman that asked if I had had contact with Governor Brown. I have, the answer is no, I have not. The, the governor had made fairly clear in her press conference that, that she was going to appoint the superintendent of the Oregon State Police to work with local agencies and in this state on how to go about enforcing these, this new order, which we haven't, you know, seen the actual order yet. So, and as all of you know, there's many agencies, there's over, I don't have an exact number of them, but there's, there's, there's well over 200 agencies and law enforcement agencies in our state alone. So I haven't had contact with the superintendent yet. I do know that there was some meetings today and I expect to hear from them tomorrow morning. It's sometime in the morning hours, at which time I will certainly advise City Manager Wheeler and, and also maybe speak to City Attorney, Attorney Doofman again at that time. So I hope that answers some of that.
Thank, thank you. And then I know Counselor Hamlin had a question.
Yeah, so I think there's a lot of risk in any decision that counsel makes tonight. And so David, if you'll let me kind of walk through where I think the decision may lie or what the decision may be. So realistically, it comes down to individual business owners and their decision, whether they're going to enforce masks or employees' masks or follow any executive order. Counsel really doesn't enforce or influence that. We can influence it by direction we may set towards the enforcement aspect of that. But just kind of thinking through this situation, we get, say we get an executive order tomorrow in, in place for Wednesday, you've already shared what authority the governor does have, and just really trying to decide what the decision is that we're being asked to make in this, in this conversation. Because is it us making a decision around whether or not counsel's going to have a opinion as to whether or not we up or, or strengthen our enforcement of these matters or back away and not enforce? Knowing that businesses may make that decision, it, it really comes down to if counsel's going to be the one that's actually providing that guidance, and if we actually have that authority to provide that guidance to our law enforcement to enforce or not enforce. And so for me, it, it doesn't really become a decision. I mean, hearing the police chief talk, both of you very eloquently about what the role of law enforcement is, makes me believe that there is some professional judgment there, but also with the risk of completely defying the governor's orders as well, too, is my concern. And I don't know that city council has the authority to have an opinion of that as a body.
And as you answer that, David, to think through, you know, because I, I think there are people watching this, and as, as these questions arise, it comes up, you know, like sanctuary status, for example, right? Like, we, we've seen other municipalities declare certain statuses against the federal government for certain things, you know, and we've had conversations about, you know, how that could be different. But just from an educational standpoint for all of us, and a, and a Counselor Hamlin's question is, is where do we have the authority to, you know, where is our decision?
So I, I think generally speaking, there isn't a great deal of authority for the council to say, to let's say the Sandy Police Department, we don't want you enforcing a governor's order, whatever that order might be. I think the main reason for that is, is, is really more immediate than any of these bigger policy questions or even deeper legal questions. And that's because under the way your charter is set up, that role is really your city manager's role. And the, the chief of police is, is under your city manager and reports to your city manager. So that would, you know, be a decision that technically speaking, if there's a decision to be made, that would be made by your city manager. Now, obviously, your city manager, you know, reports to you, you as the council are the city manager's authority. And so, you know, I, I don't mean to suggest that your position on something this weighty, you know, wouldn't have any effect or impact, but technically speaking, as far as your charter goes, that, that's a type of a decision that really comes down to the city manager's authority to make or not make. Either way, I think that the, one of the bigger issues here is the fact that a sworn peace officer in Oregon is not just enforcing local law, although they do that, of course, but it's also state law. I mean, they are D P S S T, the body that, that basically certifies law enforcement officials in Oregon, and they take an oath, and it's, you know, pretty clear, very clear from, when you're looking at state law, that they are really, you know, extensions of state law enforcement, albeit employed by localities serving the local city that they're working for, a county that they might be for a sheriff. But in addition to having that, that really important role in a local setting, they also have a, a duty as far as state law goes. So they have their own set of, of sort of, of responsibilities and duties that, that they have to follow, lest they risk potentially having their, you know, certification pulled or having, you know, risk of, of, of that being, you know, potential for them in terms of, of not following state law. Yes, it's, it's an order, it's unusual, it's not like a statute that's something that goes through the legislature, it's not even, you know, a rule that an agency might write and adopt after having notice. But, you know, we know there's executives' orders, orders out there on a variety of topics and, and the statute does, because of the unique circumstances that come with a, with an emergency, this is the way that that happens, is through executive orders and they have the force of, of law. So it would just be like a statute. So my feeling would be that ultimately it's, it's, whether it's the Sandy Police, whether it's, you know, Monmouth Police, whatever, the Plackamas County Sheriff's Office, and I'm not giving any of them legal advice, they have their own lawyers for that, but each of them as, as local law enforcement officials would still also have a, a duty when it comes to state law and the enforcement of state law. The issue that Mayor Polian brought up in terms of, you know, like sanctuary city issues and how, well, how can it be that, that, you know, local governments or some local governments, some states can take a position that they will not, you know, enforce immigration laws, immigration rules, naturalization rules? If, if that can happen, I think this is getting to the mayor's point, then, you know, why, why would we not be able to do something similar here? And the basic reason is, ultimately, you know, in, in, in this country, the states are, are sort of, it doesn't seem like that. I know we've, in this day and age, it, it seems really, and often is practically, that sort of the federal government that is sort of at the, the top of the heap, if you will. But ultimately, our form of government really rests with the power from the states. The states are granting certain power to the federal government. What they don't grant is kept for the states. One of the things that was granted, you know, like the military and the defense of the country, that's one that clearly is a national federal obligation. Another one is immigration and naturalization, that, that we, that, that duty is the federal government's duty solely to deal with. And so the reason that you can have a, historically, local government has, has assisted, local government, I mean, like states and, and cities, counties, not the federal government, but historically, there has been assistance between the federal government and state government, local government with respect to immigration issues. They've, they've many places worked pretty closely for obvious reasons. But the, the way that the sanctuary city policies work is basically a state government or a local government essentially recognizing that they don't really have any authority and by extension, any duty when it comes to immigration issues. And so they just simply say, since we don't have any obligation, we're just not going to play at all, and we're just going to leave that up to the, the federal government. So here, this, essentially, in, in Oregon, cities have a certain amount of local authority that's theirs. We talk about that, like home rule authority. And that's been kind of whittled away over the years, but basically it grants cities the right to have their own form of government. So you can have seven city councilors, five, you can choose how you adopt an ordinance, you can have some discretion as to how you elect people, how you appoint people, certain matters that are of local concern you can legislate on. But for every city in Oregon, that's, that's constrained by the, the state and the legislature always having the ability to preempt your ability to do that, to say, well, we're not going to let you sort of legislate in that area. Land use is a great example of that, right? As much as we wish we could, local governments in Oregon can't go and just say, we're not going to follow the land use system because state law says you can't. And so we had to follow what state law says when it comes to land use. This is similar to that. The emergency management system, declarations of emergency, preempts all local rules, regulations that might be contrary to like an order like the governor's.
So I, I think it kind of boils down to Counselor Hamlin's question is, then, then why are we all here? Right? And, and, and why are we talking about this? And, and the reason we are is, is, you know, immediately after the governor's press conference, my phone started ringing off the hook from local business owners, neighbors, constituents of ours. And to, you know, the points that were brought up earlier is, is yes, our, our, our police department, our chief of police answers to our city manager, and our city manager for all function, you know, kind of answers to us. And we answer, you know, to our neighbors, to our community members. And when you start hearing worry from business owners who are at a point where they're having to make an incredibly difficult decision, their livelihoods are on the line, their employees' livelihoods are on the line, and they're fairly holding on as it is. And now with this order coming down, which, you know, is for two weeks, but I mean, let's be realistic, the conversation really is, is that the Portland metro area, which we've been lumped into now for close three years, is going to be closed down for longer than that two weeks. And these business owners are at a point where they're trying to decide with their lives, their livelihood on the line, what are they going to do? They're having to make a decision if they are going to stand up and, and have the courage, and these were courage, but it's easy for me to say, right? This is not me and my money and my livelihood on the line. But they're having to decide if they're going to have the courage to stand up to a governor that they adamantly disagree with, with their life savings and work on the line, and their employees have resulting effects on them as well. Additionally, hearing from neighbors going into the Thanksgiving holiday, where the governor is basically encouraging neighbors to report on neighbors for mass gatherings. And that's not the sandy way. And we're locally elected representatives and leaders of Sandy. And going back to the point of us answering to our community members, you heard how vocal many of them were tonight. I'm sure you've seen a lot of the social media chatter, you've seen emails, and there's discussions on both sides. I would say it's quite clear, though, where the majority opinion in this community is. And I think it's important to, to, as leaders, really signify to our city employees, the folks that are going to be tasked with this enforcement, to really know what our expectations are and what our resulting opinions of performance and everything in different areas are going to be as we watch these actions take place and enforcement of this. When I say it's not the sandy way, it's not the sandy way for our police department to be knocking on the doors of neighbors to say, gather for the holidays. It's not the sandy way when an employee, when a employer, a business is opening up to necessarily come through, kick through the door and try to put them out of business. I've been asked two questions, basically, that keep coming up over and over again. One is, is with our business licenses, you know, would we be in a position where we would look to pull a business license if somebody was in violation? David can address that, but from a conversation I've had with him, it sounds like, no, that's not how we really utilize our business license enforcement. It's more of, you know, just to be candid, it's more of a revenue generator for the city than a, than a tool for enforcement. So I do want to, you know, put some minds to, you know, nervous, nervousness to ease a little bit on that. And, and I do just want to kind of paint the picture for, for folks, business owners, we got a lot of people tuning in tonight as they're making their decisions ahead, to allow them just a little bit of insight into what it would look like from our behavior. uh, to allow them just a little bit of insight into what it would look like from our behavior. Uh, we, we can't control the state, can't control OSHA. We can't control necessarily state police, but we can control our behavior. And I think what Chief Roberts has said, uh, is encouraging, uh, you know, that we, uh, are complaint driven. We're not looking to kind of go out and start knocking on doors and actively, uh, search. Uh, but that's really, um, uh, you know, what we're here to do tonight as, um, representatives of our community, to listen to our community and also set our expectations on enforcement, um, you know, to our city staff. And, and, and that's what I wanted to accomplish. Um, Counselor Smallwood, do you have a, a statement or question?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a few statements here. You know, to this body, what we're, what we're really talking about here is, is the American dream. And for these business owners who have done everything that the governor has asked them, they have required masks, they have socially distanced their, um, uh, patrons. They have changed the way they do business. They've increased their cleaning standards. They have, um, you know, paid money for outdoor seating. Uh, the list goes on and on. And, and for this now to come down and say, hey, it wasn't enough and we're going to close you down. I think the reality, and I agree with the mayor, that this isn't going to be two weeks because all of the contact tracing is not telling us that people are getting this in health clubs, workout facilities, restaurants or stores. The contract tracing is leading back into the home. So this isn't going to end in two weeks. This is going to continue and continue and continue. This cannot be the way we do business in America. Destroying people's lives cannot be how we do business in America. Um, let's talk about the forty-one thousand seven hundred people in the state right now that still haven't received their unemployment benefits. And that's per the unemployment website as of today. So now you're going to tell these people that they need to go back on unemployment during the holidays and maybe, maybe not get any more paychecks? Um, and then lastly, I don't want our local law enforcement, and we've discussed this at length, and thank you, Chief Roberts, for your input, um, having any negative interactions after spending months, uh, working on their public relations with all of the social, uh, issues that have been going on in America. Um, you know, I think our police department has done a fabulous job of, uh, speaking to the community and doing community policing and, uh, working with all of the, the interest groups in our community. Um, and it just, we've got a great, um, working relationship right now, and I don't want to see anything jeopardize that. Uh, and lastly, just to kind of put some things in perspective, uh, for this body, and I am not downplaying COVID. Uh, it obviously is not my wish that anyone, uh, should lose their life ever. But we're talking about a disease right now in Oregon that has killed two hundred and seven people, which, you know, every life has value, but we're not talking about the eight hundred and sixty-two suicides that have happened in the exact same timeframe in this state right now. So there's my kind of two cents of where we're at. Um, you know, I, I, I firmly believe that these businesses have, uh, the right, uh, and the ability that they should be able to operate, uh, as they see fit. So that's kind of where I'm at.
Thank you, Counselor Smallwood. Any other questions or statements by counsel? All right. Well, thank you, uh, to staff for the research that you, uh, conducted. I, um, you know, I think what's important is, is, uh, continued dialogue between, um, ourself as a council and you on what this executive order actually states, um, along with, um, you know, how it, it asks our local law enforcement, uh, to participate. Um, and I really believe, um, as we proceed, the expectations of this community is pretty clear. Um, that, uh, we do believe in taking precautions as a community. Uh, we do believe in social distancing and, and, um, improper, uh, mask wearing and everything else. I think when you look at our local businesses, um, how they have adapted to the COVID nineteen pandemic and the controls they've put into place. I believe that in fact, one of our athletic clubs was highlighted in a trade magazine for, um, many of their practices. So we do take this, uh, as a community, we take this pandemic very seriously. Uh, we take our interactions with our neighbors very seriously. But in that interaction, I think it's important that we also set expectations as to what the sandy way truly is when our community members are dealing with our law enforcement, as well as the expectations of our law enforcement with all the other demands on them and their department, um, as to what really is taking, uh, priority. Um, and that is, um, really where my concerns are, is when you do look at, uh, the Counselor Smallwood's point, but when you do look at the mortality rate. You know, I've, I've said this on social media, but zero to seventy being over ninety-nine percent survivable, uh, even seventy-four and over being over ninety-four, uh, percent. I hear numbers on, uh, hospital capacity. We're again trying to flatten the curve and provide our hospital system room, but I see numbers since of Friday of eleven at Oregon's leading, uh, research hospital and OHSU, five at Hillsborough Medical, sixteen across all the Portland, Adventist, uh, health system, uh, throughout Portland, this for a community of greater Portland at about a million people population. I'm sorry, uh, I'm just not seeing, uh, the risk and mortality. I'm not seeing the hospital system, uh, the evidence being prevented, presented that it's getting, uh, overwhelmed. And then when you look at these closures of fitness centers and restaurants and bar establishments, making up such a, a, a small percentage, I've seen as low as three percent, um, of the overall spread. It really makes you wonder what we're trying to accomplish and how many people are truly hurting while doing this. So with that said, uh, let's continue to be vigilant and watch, but I did want to provide an opportunity for our community to really speak out on this issue, for our council to weigh in and really kind of provide expectations to our staff and, and to receive information on what this order is and what we can and what we can't do. I think that's important for both our councils as well as our community members to have an adequate understanding of this, to what really is within our power to control and what isn't. So uh, thank you again to everybody who participated tonight for all the work that staff put into this and, uh, and yeah, let's just, uh, keep, uh, keep watchful on the issue. With that, we'll move forward to our report from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, on a lighter note, we do have the holidays coming up. Uh, tree lighting is right around the corner, um, because of what we just talked about. Um, we are shifting plans and I actually wanted to get a little bit of your input, um, on this and, and maybe involvement. Um, and what we're looking at is, um, more of a virtual event, but a drive-through, um, portion that I think actually, um, would be kind of nice, uh, personally, um, with, especially with kids and trying to crowd folks and all that, um, but able to watch the tree lighting virtually. Um, so have a, a virtual tree lighting, a countdown ceremony and all that. And then, um, have the drive-through portion with a tree lit up where we would have the street closed off and everything. So people can drive through and get cookies and coffee and cocoa, um, and, and other treats, uh, is part of that. Um, it does provide us an opportunity to do something a little, um, more special, like for, for the mayor and the council to do statements, um, that we can even pre-record if you guys were up for it. Um, you know, we can have the MC portion, uh, what, what, um, what we've done before and, um, with the countdown, but also I, I think a, a holiday message or something might be a nice, um, gesture too, if you guys were up for it. Um, so I'm, I'm happy to get the folks in touch with you and try to set up how we can do that. Um, you know. Okay. I'm seeing heads nod. Cool.
Yeah. I fully expect Counselor Hamlin to be standing in front of his house with a Christmas message.
Well, he's got a green string currently, so.
Yeah, with a green shirt on, I guess it's just my tribute to the Ducks victory this last weekend.
Great. Um, uh, a small item here, um, you know, we're getting started on transportation system plan. Um, part of that is a stakeholder committee. We'd love some counselor involvement on that. Um, so we're looking for volunteers, um, from continuing counselors preferably, uh, so you can stay on for more than a, a month. Um, but, um, you know, if the mayor wants to reach out to counselors for volunteers, or if you guys want to volunteer now, I know it's already been kind of a long night. Um, but we'd love to see some counsel, uh, on that committee.
Let me on there.
Let me on. Mayor and, and Counselor Exner. Okay. Great. Um, uh, Counselor Exner, you had some questions or some comments about our wastewater treatment plant and, and what we're looking at there in the watersheds. Um, they did reach out and then asked to reschedule the tour of the treatment plant for later this month. Um, I think you, you were on that. So we'll look, uh, for a future time. Uh, but in, you know, we're looking to set up maybe a virtual meeting, um, sometime in the next, uh, month or so to talk with the watershed council about what's happening out there. One thing we didn't mention with the scope negotiations with, um, West Coast is that it's part of why we're kind of, um, you know, asked for, you know, to take out the amount is we are negotiating their services in terms of what we're trying to do down there and do more, um, reviewing the preliminary engineering report, talking with the operators, um, you know, really looking under every nook and cranny to see what else that we can do to prioritize there. You know, is there any, um, additional budget we can find to, to advance other work or say, you know, doing this type of work is more important than this type of work in toward, in terms of getting the permit compliance. So um, having them on board is helpful. We have a lot of engineering, engineers working on this. Uh, but I think that would be also important for the watershed council to hear and, and maybe then we'll have a full scope to talk about and then also talk about what we've done to date. Um, so we'll continue to work on that, but I wanted to let you guys know that, for now, the tour has been, uh, postponed. Um, and then finally, I think, um, we'll probably have a report from a counselor, um, or two on this, but the, you know, we're making progress. We made progress on the coronavirus relief grants, which are, I think I said this in my email to you all, very timely, uh, on getting these out the door. And I think they're being advertised this week for, um, applications due, uh, early next week. Um, so, um, I won't, I won't speak to too much of that. I know others are involved, um, with this, but those will be coming out. Um, we'll of course put that out on Facebook, on our website, get the word out. Um, but another great opportunity to, to try to help support the businesses through these next, uh, few weeks especially. Um, I know it's not a lot, but every little bit hopefully can, can help, um, you know, that are struggling businesses. So uh, that's my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor Schultz?
Yeah, uh, we had a library board meeting last week, um, when they presented the code of conduct and there were a couple minor questions, but everyone was very willing to sign that. So that is, should be getting done, I think this week. Um, they went over their mask guidelines for if and when we can have patrons inside the library um, and what that will look like. The hope was that they would be able to start having some, um, browsing in the library by appointment within the next couple of months. Um, I think maybe the new situation will, uh, have some, um, and then there's also a lot of concerns with staffing and cleaning protocols to make that work. But it's on, it's on their minds. Um, Sarah is hopeful to get people into the library again soon. And then, let's see. Oh, the computer usage by appointment is going really well. They're getting a lot of appointments for that. Um, again, with the new guidelines, it sounds like we are going to go back to only one person in the lab at a time. Um, but it sounds like we're going to be able to keep going with that at this point. And then I wanted to follow up on, I talked with Jordan about this last week. I got a call from someone who, um, is concerned about leaves in the streets. Um, over on Barlow Parkway, uh, I used to live down there and we used to have to go out and like rake the leaves out of the storm grates or it would flood, the street would flood. Um, so the neighbors are sort of used to doing that, but I guess the parks maintenance people have been sort of blowing extra leaves from the park into the street and then it becomes not possible to keep up with anymore. So, um, we were going to be reaching out. Do you know if that happened, Jordan?
Yeah. So, um, Mike and Joe looked into it. Um, they, you know, weren't blowing them into the street. I think they were blowing them into the median to try to clean them up. It's kind of their, maybe a multi-stage process to, to clean up the leaves, but you know, they know not to blow them into the streets because we often get those calls and they're the same ones that have to go and rake them out of the gutters. Um, so, um, yeah, it was probably part of the cleanup process. Um, sometimes, you know, on windy days, leaves, I mean, it's a lot of leaves are falling right now, so it's hard to stay up on. There's also the street sweeper, I think is in town, um, this week, and that does help because that you get the, the sweepers out there to pick up the material. Um, you know, so, um, we're kind of in this, uh, a lot of leaves falling right now. We do really appreciate the help with people, you know, helping, you know, rake the, the, the storm drains out if they can. Um, we try to stay on top of it and kind of, in, uh, clean up those leaves, but, um, uh, yeah, I mean, we, we checked with staff and, um, yeah, there, there wasn't any deliberate, but you know, sometimes it does happen where, you know, maybe some get into the street or, um, just part of the cleanup process can be messy. But thank you for bringing that.
By and like kicked all the street leaves into the street or something like that. Okay. All right. Yeah, I figured something like that, but just wanted to make sure we were addressing it so that, um, it doesn't become worse. But, um, and I think that's all I've got.
Thank you, Counselor Schultz. Appreciate it. Um, Counselor Exner?
Yeah, I got a couple of really upbeat kind of things I wanted to mention. One is, I, I saw the tree lights going up on the main proctor today and I, I'm really appreciate that. I was sitting there in my office madly trying to get up some office work, paperwork, and I looked up and like, here's this guy with the long pole putting the lights up and it, and after I got out of my office, just a half an hour before I came here, I noticed that they're all up and shining bright and it just really looks great. I, it's, it's good to see something positive coming out of all this isolation and, uh, comments that we've had about businesses going down and people being taking the task about not isolating. It just, I appreciate that. It's really good. I, I'm wondering even if the, uh, if we do something with the tree that we also might do something with the city hall, is there plans to put some lights on the city hall too?
Yeah, we do that. Um, I think we do that every year. Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll make sure we get some up.
They're going up today.
Is that right? I didn't see.
Ladder up on the building today.
I didn't see anything on the city hall. Lots of other lights going up and stuff and, and the police station too. Um, there's some trees up that way. I sure love to see that go on. Well, there's some electricity in the plugs, the base of the trees are not by the police, but what a great look. Another thing is, is, um, I want to compliment the library. Uh, there are other libraries in our county and especially throughout the tri-county that are not doing anything. They're just not supplying service to their citizens. And I just want to compliment ours in that, um, whenever I go down and loan a book out, it's just really good to see somebody that I, I seen in the past. They come out and put my books out on the table there and they wave at me and it just is great. I appreciate that. Anything that the library can do, it's really a positive, uh, interaction that way. Oh, going over to the sewer system, sorry, I can't stay away from that. Both of the watershed councils said that they would be very interested in seeing what the council's, uh, was displayed for by Murray Smith, uh, virtually, if that's something we could set up. If we can't go out and tour, maybe we can at least take a look at what the alternatives are and where those things fit where we are with the city and maybe back and forth and answers. If we get, uh, someone Murray Smith to do that for us, for them, that would be helpful, I think. It might be a great alternative to not being able to get the tours going on. And, and back with that same thing, uh, have we at all looked at the, uh, personal property lines that we talked about those being an issue as well? Uh, I know that they aren't the high priority, the two basins that we're going to take a look at the lines, but we had talked at one time about the drain lines from the houses itself out to the mains. There were some issues that we might be able to help deal with, uh, some of the, uh, the way we have, uh, our water is, uh, going into our community lines. Uh, have we ever looked into that and see if that's something we can look at?
Yeah. And the council, um, authorized us to, um, go ahead and do the private laterals. And so one of the things that we need to do early next year is to, um, I think I've mentioned this before, but we have a, a number of financings that we need to do through a full faith and credit issue. And one of them would be the portion of that, the work of the collection system work that is on the private lateral side. Um, so that was a policy decision, the council, we had a couple of different options for that. This is the cleanest and easiest thing to do is just do the work, tighten those up. So it, it helps with those, you know, leaks and breaks and cross connections. Um, and just do the whole collection system in eight, two, in, in those two basins. So, yeah.
Next summer, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. So they're, they're, they're going to start with the, the inspections, the TV inspections, uh, and, and the design work. And then we'll, um, get the guaranteed maximum price to go out and do the actual pipe work.
Right. That's it for me. Thank you. You, Counselor Exner. You, Counselor Exner, Counselor Lee.
Yes, Jeremy, Carl and I were on the task force that's looking at the business grants along with a couple of community members. And we've had a couple of meetings now with both Tyler and David and have prepared a form that will go out to people who are interested in getting the grants. It'll be pretty similar to last time, but it's different in that we have a point system to evaluate the applications. And we allow people to tell us more about what their issues are so that we can make some better judgments. And people that have already saved a grant in the last round would have a little less priority than others. So we look forward to coming up with getting those applications and coming up with decisions in a couple of weeks. Other than that, we're going to be reviewing PC applicants, planning commission. Couple of us are on that group that's meeting on the third with the applicants and that's about all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Lee.
Well, Carl, you stole some of my thunder because I was going to call out the lights because I got this thing for lights. So awesome with those getting put up. It's always, it always makes Sandy look so magical at nighttime. And I always wish that we could change it to where we could have those up all year round because it just looks beautiful. And I think it sets a vision and memory for folks as they pass through as well too. So not a whole lot from me. Happy to hear the update. Thank you, Bethany, for asking the question I was going to ask about the street sweepers as well too. Glad to hear they're going to be in town this week. And I just wanted to also add too, we are recognizing that our community has been impacted by COVID. At the Sandy Light Show, we're going to be starting our show a lot earlier this year. And so we normally don't start until at the end of the first week of December. We are going to start our light show on Thanksgiving evening and I'll post information up on the website as well too. We had a week long during Halloween and lots of visitors. And so we know right now people need it pretty badly. So if we can put a few smiles on people's faces. And one of the things, my wife has this idea, and if any of you have any suggestions on how to accomplish this. And no, I'm a pretty creative person. I can come up with some pretty good ideas, but I am stumped on this one. She wants to do a candy cane shoot for when people come watch the lights that we can send a candy cane down a chute. And she was talking about releasing it from the second story, which I think would actually result in some EMTs probably being called to the house or somebody getting hurt on the other end. So if you've got ideas on that, feel free and I just encourage all of you, if you get a chance, you and your families, stop on by, come by yourselves as well too. We do see a lot of our community, some of the retirement homes in town, assisted living homes, bringing the van around. I'm on a nightly basis as well too. So a lot of people get to enjoy it. And most important part for me is it's free. So hope to see you all give a beep if you're by Facebook page, Sandy Light Show, if you want to look this up and check out our hours. But that's all I have. In one more month and you added one more meeting, my time on council will be over, which is really starting to set in.
John, I want to thank you because it's free to the community, but you pay for it. I know in your love and labor, but the house with the electric bill, even though they may all be the LEDs.
All we ask is that we partner every year with Sandy's Helping Hands. And if folks do want to contribute, contribute to Sandy's Helping Hands. And in December, our family matches donations to up to a thousand bucks. So if you do want to help, help there and that helps us and makes, makes it all worthwhile for us.
Wonderful. Thank you. A great report, Counselor. Counselor Smallwood.
Yeah, John, several people in my neighborhood have those shoots for Halloween. So I think there's quite a few online tutorials that you could probably access. So, and for those of you who are looking for someplace to donate as we get closer to the end of the year and you need your tax deduction, Sandy Helping Hands is a great one to look at. So speaking of them. I participated in the interviews for the police department, both today and last Monday. And I think you got some good candidates there, chief. So be anxious to hear the results of some of that. So, and then lastly, I would like to recognize Kevin Moody. I was on my way into town on Friday during the downpour that we were having. And he was standing in about eight inches of water raking leaves out of a storm drain. So good for him, way to protect the public and prevent any accidents from happening. So thank you, Kevin, and that's all I got.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Petezel.
Yeah, I don't know about these leaves. There must be a theme because it seems like it's a little bit more worse this year. And maybe, I don't know if they've just been delayed or what, but they seem to be coming a little bit slick. But it seems like about four of us have commented on the leaves in the streets. So maybe it's about time we get our street sweeper to come a little bit more often next fall or get them there as our city grows. Or our trees are growing and creating more leaves falling. But, and I know I've filled up my yard debris bin many, 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 many times and I only have two trees. So anyway, we have an OBAC meeting this week. And I know that some of the topics that have been in the past is just during this pandemic and why everyone is forced at home for schooling. How internet is so, so very important in our communities, inside our cities and in the rural areas as well. Where a lot of the internet, it is not satisfying to be able to do one virtual class online, let alone multiple kids online. And so that is becoming a very hot topic or has been a hot topic. But as we go forward into the next legislation, hopefully we'll see some funding and that type of thing going towards that. As they realize we have a lot of rural inadequate speeds. We have a econ meeting that we had last week and so, I think it was last week, the week before. Anyway, we, it was a great meeting where we had the representative from selling the property or representing the property for the skippers and got to tell us a lot about what they were envisioning there. And also asked us a lot of questions about what our city and our economic development committee had envisions for the area as well as, this area there is one of the last large pieces of property or couple pieces of property for commercial in that area. But it does, one of our main goals is, or two main goals, one of them being that transportation link, that 362nd Bell Street, which is such a vital area in our community as we've always talked about, especially for the north side of Highway 26. And talked about how that is really the only way there would be a development on that, those properties is having that, that road we put in, which, you know, is kind of two things that have been on our goal list. The, we also, as I know Jan mentioned there, our grant committee for small businesses met a couple of times. And so those things will go out. I know Jordan mentioned it as well for applications. And so I know it's not a lot of money that's going out there in this pandemic, in this time. There are businesses are really struggling and need more than that. But, you know, it's something that will help. I hope it will help. So please apply. If you're on there, I know we still have many attendees on here. And so we need you to apply for those. And we look forward to reading through all of those applications. And, and then during this shutdown, as we've been talking about the entire time, one thing that we did as a family in the spring that, you know, it's expensive for us as a family to go out to eat, but we made it a priority. A family of five to try to go out to, you know, many, many, many times my family kind of got used to going out to eat. But to support our local businesses because, you know, without them and they fail, they come out of this, we aren't going to have those amazing business owners and businesses that are part of our community. And so trying to do and find ways to support our local businesses and that's just one of the ways. And so I encourage you to do that and maybe find gift cards or those things for the Christmas holidays to be able to give to family members or stocking stuffers that will infuse money back into our local businesses. Remembering that, you know, the local dollar once spent in a local community gets spent four times over versus spending that dollar on a, on a, some businesses that is corporately held outside of your community. And so just keep that in mind. It's a great way to support your local neighbor and your businesses. You know, I really do, you know, stress out about this time as well as it's been communicated tonight and as we listen. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor, and thank you everyone for a very talkative and robust meeting tonight. After a hard year here in 2020, it's nice to be entering the holiday season here in Sandy, which is really is a special time of year. Please do keep your eye out for a lot of the activities that the Sandy Community Action Center puts on around this time every year. They do about 200 food baskets out into the community. And then every year, well, not every year, recent years, my family, I see the Pete's Old family out there on the tickle trot. My family usually kind of leaves midway and grabs donuts somewhere. The Pete's Olds tend to win the event. But this year is more of a do it on your own, obviously with the restrictions. The Action Center is going to be putting together a Facebook page for folks to do their own family runs and take pictures. If you do register for the event, there will be swag. So please do consider participating. It's a great fundraising event every year for the Action Center. And it's one of those great kind of community events that we're, we're doing together a part this year.
Mayor, can I add something to that? As we talked about earlier today, the health of us getting out and exercising, you know, and with the gyms possibly being forced to close, it is very important for our health and our mental health to get out. And what a great event that that has been. So we will be participating, you know, we will. And I, you know, recommend, you know, everyone else, you know, being safe and getting out and exercising that, that food off. But, you know, it's good for the brain as well as the muscles. So thank you for bringing that up.
You shop local and go to Joe's Donuts, Counselor Petezel, that's, that's fine too.
We're a little competitive.
That's right. And then as we go to the Christmas season, Jordan talked about the holiday, the tree lighting that happens, of course. Counselor Hamlin and the festivities that he puts on, just a great time here in Sandy. So keep an eye out for a lot of those events. This is our, I think, I believe it's our first meeting since the election. And so I wanted to congratulate our Counselor Lex and Kathleen Walker and Richard Sheldon and Don Hawkinson. I think I saw all three of them at some point, if not now, tuning into the meeting. So thank you for already participating. I know that I've had an opportunity to reach out to everyone, had an opportunity to talk to Counselor Lex Hawkinson, Sheldon, great conversation. Was hoping to make contact this week when we got a little nuts. And then with the shutdown, I'm not sure we're going to be able to do in person. But really hoping to, with all three, Counselor Lex, for us to really start dialogue and start to bring you in. With that, I had the opportunity to participate in the ribbon cutting at John's Rude Viewpoint this past week. It was a phenomenal event. I'd love to, I want to thank our city staff, particularly David Snyder and our economic development manager for all the work put in there. All the members of our parks committee and then primarily Counselor like Kathleen Walker, who as many of you remember, really brought up the event to us at one of our work sessions with how we wanted to use some of that Clackamas County tourism money and our matching funds. And then really did a great job as project manager on that. You know, I also want to publicly apologize. We probably should have worked a little harder to schedule an event around the schedule. My understanding with you being out of town, it was, your presence was missed. We were very grateful for everything you did for that project. And especially for what we were able to do with the technology for the colorblind, definitely check out the new viewers. I know it was, so it was pretty remarkable seeing folks see that with color for the first time. I believe that technology is the only of its kind this side of Tennessee. So pretty cool for Sandy to have that. And obviously that's a very iconic location. It's our number one tourist spot. Yeah, it was just, it was a great event. On the grants, want to thank our committee members for participating on the COVID relief grants. The conversation today and the public testimony is, it's so vital that we continue to do that. You know, we may have to continue to get more creative. I'm worried about just the way kind of, you know, the presidency and the Congress kind of all round up. I'm worried about gridlock and the potential of not having a future COVID relief bill. So, you know, we're going to have to kind of proceed with caution, I think, as a community while trying to do the very best we can to help out our local business owners and employees and help our main street economy stay vibrant. And then just with that, I'll just end with what Counselor Petezel talked about, which is, you know, shop local. Do your best to help out our local business owners who are really struggling right now. I know for our, some of our local fitness centers, ones can freeze and cancel their memberships, but we can also choose to continue to pay and to continue our memberships to help out the employees and the people there. I know with our local dining establishments, many are going through the process of takeout and delivery. And so let's do, continue to try to promote those. Looking to you, Jeff, and I'll participate as well and hopefully different counselors. And really pushing out a strong message of shopping local and helping out our local industry. It's going to be so important right now or the next several weeks that we, we all work together. And then just in closing, you know, I mentioned kind of the Sandy way and the conversations tonight. You know, we're a people of responsibility and great personal responsibility. And, you know, we've overcome tremendous hurdles and we always find our own way, whether it's not getting our service from TriMet and starting our own local transit in SAM or not getting the internet and starting our own broadband. You know, we're a community that relies on each other and we rely on doing it the right way. And so, you know, I did have a lot of concerns and I still about kind of encouraging neighbors to turn in neighbors and enforcement of business owners that are struggling like they are. So as we move forward, let's just really kind of keep our heads up and be trying to help out our local neighbors and business owners in this community. And really, really be thinking about interactions, what, what our community expects of us. And really what we're all about is people that chose for most of the same reasons to live here, to raise our families here. So thank you, everyone. Thank you for the community participation. And with that, I'll adjourn tonight's meeting. Have a nice evening, everybody.